What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna start with this little ICM spot that we came came upon. So this one has a point five big, we are on a final table. This gentleman has point five big blind. And we have the cutoff who is the chip leader with, I think he has around twenty big blinds. Who's open.
Yeah sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty three.
Sixty three, so.
Has about thirty.
Yeah. And then it's action is on us with ace king off suit. What do you guys think we should do here with around eight big blinds, I think?
Yeah. And big blinds got like twenty.
Yeah.
My inkling is to say it's a close call.
Hmm.
Um, I know the answer, I'm still fucking calling.
It's definitely affected by the fact that we're third by a long shot and not like second. If we if the if we were if you replaced our stacks with us being the second in place, it obviously becomes a lot, lot worse.
Yeah, so for me, this is an easy fold.
We're almost tied for second if we win the race and we know he's jamming probably any two.
He is. So like say you know he's jamming any two cards. For me, it's an easy fold. The very next hand, the big line is all in. For half a big.
I mean, it's right.
Yeah.
Which means even if he even if he gets there, the big blind, he's then only last one more orbit anyway.
Yeah. So this is definitely a spot where you need to fold. You need to fold hands like ace queen suited, you need to fold hands like ace king up, ace jack off, all that stuff. You need to fold hands like pocket ten is an easy fold here.
I really call him. So you ran this?
Yes, we did. And can't close the window, but I took a screenshot of what matters, which is this. So this is the calling. For the small blind here.
Man, it's psychotic.
It's pretty, it's pretty sweet, right? So.
I wonder if.
Easy fold.
What I'm curious about though is like JL often talks about going for the win and not just like pay jumps and I wonder if this is one of those spots where.
This is one of those spots where if you run with ace king.
You win this hand your second in chips with the chance to win way more money than just two buy ins. Like that's what I'm thinking, like when do we decide, when do we think for ourselves?
If if the guy has five bigs, maybe you can rumble with this because he's not likely to bust as much, but with less than one big.
Exactly, so. Can you reopen it?
You can put me in this exact spot the next five days in a row and I am not gonna fold ace king. Even though I know HRC says we need to.
Yeah, it's a mathematic problem here and it's losing. So you should stop to rumble with ace game, otherwise you'll never get out of ICM day.
It's okay.
Why is there such a big, why is there such a big disparity between ace king suited and ace king off?
The suited. Variety has a bit more equity.
I'd actually like calling ace ten and ace jack wolf some ace five or four suited, so it was wonky.
Yeah, like, but I mean, I think of all the times that I don't make a flush with ace king suited, but just make top pair. Like I failed to see how ace king suited is gonna win more often.
Because you're gonna make some flashes and that's good enough. Good enough for the matrix here.
And I don't trust, I don't trust the HRC solution this time.
Well, I told you it was a fold and then the program confirmed, so you need to, you need to wake up or can't.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta throw your shit out the window.
Though, to be fair, I mean, I would love to know what the dollar value of the stake is. I don't think it's, it's not torching, I've seen other spots that are torching.
So the buy in's a thousand fifty, I think it says here.
And you're losing eight hundred bucks with this call.
One page, three thousand dollars. It was like a two and a half buy and pay jump.
Yeah, ICM is all about stack distribution, simple as that. And here we have a very big stack and we have a very short stack. And we just need to fold, it's sad, right?
I mean, to make purely to make money, it's absolutely a hundred percent right.
Yeah. Well, that's your goal.
But I think.
You're not an equity warrior here.
When you wanna have the chance to make the most money, that's when you gotta gamble.
No, you're losing money if you gamble here.
I'm in it to gamble.
Yeah, but it's not the way to, the right way to approach it. You should fold here, this is like serious, right? They're playing for thousands. So they don't wanna gamble with thousands, right? The right place to fold, simple as that. So you just got to fold and move on, maybe you get aces next. And you know what, or all you know, you fold here, next then this guy's all in and this guy and this guy both bust each other and then you're look, all of a sudden they're your three way. You know, so you need to look at like other games, like future game simulations. Right?
Anyone knows that the guy was.
He won the hand, I think.
Who?
Nah, that we, I don't know the the rest of the.
Well, all I know is Sam, he called and the cutoff said fuck. I don't even know why the cutoff would care because he's got every, he's just like not even losing anything. He's not losing any chip mobility.
Not.
And we looked at the matrix, the cutoff has an open any two. The first matrix, the first matrix had was an open jam at eighty percent range. But we tweaked this for any two and it was still working. The call, our calling range didn't change one bit.
I'll run FGS now and see if it's any different.
Can you share the screen?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, you are. Then go fuck, the cutoff doesn't care. Like even if the five hundred, even if the base line calls and he lose the pot, he still does. Be. He doesn't care.
Uh, we don't have the cutoff jamming, I gotta set it up again.
You don't even have to look, I know.
Well, I wanted to show the others because I think it's a really interesting hand. And since Ken did the work, we might as well share it, right?
You could jam it. But I think Jonathan Little has a video from a while ago that talks about these spots where like nowadays the the top price is not as much as it used to be, he was saying it used to be like the top guy wins thirty percent of the the price pool, now it's more like fifteen.
It's twenty five.
So you want you want the ladder.
Hey, Sam, you're kind of lagging, we have a hard time hearing you.
It's sixteen percent up top roughly. Why isn't the cutoff jamming? Oh, I made button jam, fuck.
And he.
General.
Is it better now?
Yes.
You can't hear me now?
Yeah.
So Jonathan has a has a YouTube or a video explaining the price structure difference from where it used to be where the, when like say it was the full tilt day where like the winner wins like thirty percent of the price pool instead of fifteen or twenty like it is now. Um, he was saying back then you're more incentivized to gamble because the top price is so heavy. But now it's not, so I still think there's some price structure difference, I think when we play, you should always look at the price structure. If the top price is really like a lot compared to the price pool, then you're incentivized to gamble, but I still don't think this is a good spot because even if we double up, we're still like third in chips, so it doesn't really increase our chance of winning. But let's say if he jams, I have like six or seven hundred thousand here and if I double up, I'm gonna be the chip leader and the top price is really top heavy like twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty percent, then 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 I would think it's a. I'm sorry?
No, you're right, I believe you're right. Now, what I would like to see, Ken, okay, is I want to change the hijack stack.
First of all, I wanna have him jamming any two because I really believe this is what he's doing.
Well, sure.
Yeah, but if you believe this is what he's doing, then it makes your call even worse.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna show the hand.
I don't think it changes much, actually.
So the hand is, this guy has point five big blinds. The cutoff open, open jams. The button folds and we're looking at ace king off from the small blind with eight big blinds. So that's the hand, we're looking at whether we should rumble with it or not and for me, it's a fold. Share again, please, Ken.
There is also this small factor that the big blind could get out of the line and have pocket queens or pocket backs and bust out as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think that, I don't think that supersedes the fact that the the guy who has half a big is gonna be in the big blind is very likely to go broke the very next hand.
Yeah, or or the hand after that, right? It's like that half a blind is not surviving three hands, right?
So it's like, it's like, it's like if we fold here. There is like.
Ken has been trying really, really hard.
Percent, try to collect the two point five K. It like when, when I went, right, when I saw the big stack jam, I just laugh out loud, I'm like, oops.
Well, that's why the big stack, uh, when he said, oh crap, when, uh, when the guy called because he thought he ran into kings or aces probably.
Yeah.
Morning Lily, good morning, everybody.
Hey, good morning.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, the cutoff didn't say, oh crap, the cutoff was not one of the streamers. It was the guy who has the ace king that says, oh fuck.
So Ken has been trying really, really hard to get ace king off to be profitable, but he has not found the way yet, but I have a way for you, Ken. You're gonna be happy, if we make the short stack bigger, it's gonna work. If I wanna see how deep the short stack has to be in order for us to have a profitable call here. So I wanna see if he has two big blinds, if things change, I wanna see if he has like five big blinds, ten big blinds. And then if, I'm pretty sure if he has like twenty big blinds, we're supposed to be, no, make it two.
Oh, no, that if 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 he covers you, then you you rumble with it.
Yeah.
Your last in chips, you always rumble.
Well, there's a thin line, right, where it's gonna like want to shift, right? It's gonna start to run with ace king and I wanna see, I believe it's because of the short stack. That's, that's why I said it was a fold and then.
I think that's a good idea, I think.
Really?
Yeah, even just having two bigs.
Oh, well, we're gonna look at like the best response and like, like point twenty one, but like we're really close already.
Yeah, well, I mean, if this guy's shoving any two, like, and even if the guy has two bigs, he probably should shove any two.
And it's a good any two range because it does mix his top of range, which is what you, you know, you would expect a good player to do, you're not just pure jamming. Like he's not even jamming any of these now, when he only had a half a big blind, it mixed top of range. Now it's not even jamming like his best stuff and his worst stuff.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's a good model.
So now. Okay, make it point twenty one.
I mean, we know point twenty one's gonna be aces, ace king, ace queen.
Well, we can see the finite like.
Eight, it's gonna be eight plus, ace queen suited plus.
Yeah, but it's easier to see.
And you want twenty five, you want twenty one percent, point two one, right?
My point two oh nine. Boom.
Eight plus ace queen.
So ace king is still a fold.
Yeah.
Alright, make him four big lines.
About three.
Well, we can try three. So we see our range is already changing a lot, so it's really a function of the shortest stack and stack distribution. Oh, so see? Really? We're at three big lines and now it's a call.
Out in there.
Yeah, because if he doubles up from three to six, all of a sudden you don't have a chip advantage, right? He's almost at your stack depth.
Ace jack shoes getting in there now. Eight are in there.
I had, I had a pretty similar spot in, um, in, um, the venom fever where I was, uh, doing fine coming into the money. Um, picked over a really marginal shove from the button that I thought was unnecessary and I thought I was gonna squeak into the money. The super low chip stack like doubles up, doubles up, doubles up right on the bubble and then all of a sudden I'm looking for hands. Um, end up stone bubbling.
Ooh.
But a very similar spot where like when he was, when he was like one big or something, I'm picking over almost everything. And then, you know, you don't have to take those spots until he's at three, until he's at four, then you, then you start thinking about it.
Yeah, so at three big blinds, we have a break even spot, kind of like it's profitable, but like it's really close, so make him four.
And a half.
And then it'll be a slam dunk.
Well, he has two and a half here, right?
Three and a half will be in there.
No, he has three, so here if you put three and a half or four, it'll be all the way. Yeah, when he has four, if he doubles up, he has the same stack as you, so.
So while this run, I'm gonna show the hand again in case you missed the beginning. Like Mr. Land. Uh, so here we're in the small blind with ace king with eight big blinds, this guy has point five big blinds and chip leader open rips for how much was it? Sixty? Sixty, we're looking at ace. What do you do, all in or fold?
This is a super easy fold.
I agree with you.
Easiest fold I've ever made in my life.
Exactly, we just want the ladder now, we don't need no trouble. But you know what, it's a function, that's what I, that's what we're looking at, it's a function of how deep the short stack is and it really changes a lot, whether he has like point five or.
It looks like as he approaches half of our stack is when we wanna start calling wider.
Yeah, can you share?
Right now, he's almost at half our stack, just a couple, you know, tons of a big blind under. And we're just getting in there.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just getting in there now, so we, he has, uh, three point three seven, we have, so it's almost half our stack.
Okay.
Curious, let me give him exactly half our stack and see what happens. Just keep getting wider and wider, the bigger the more he has. And it makes sense, we kinda know that when we're close to the bottom, to the last, we can play more.
Very nice, man, I took some very good notes, I think. What I have here is if the short stack has half of our chips, we are likely to be gambling a lot more at the final table and the range are a function of stack distribution. So now like we can see how like it works, right? Like it's a good hand. But not if there's a really, really short stack. Was it Sam who posted that hand? Yeah, right, it was Sam, thanks a lot, it was a really nice hand to look at.
So this is five percent, I've seen other sites that say five percent, uh, I know we say ten, I'm still not sure exactly which one it is.
Yeah.
I'm more inclined to go in between seven and eight percent.
You're, the tighter you are on this spot, the more likely you are to make money, right? Yeah, so a really interesting hand. So, 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 how many hands do we have here? From Mr. Day. We have six, six, eight, and we are at five seventy nine. So still a hundred hands to go, James isn't here, so we're gonna do something else today. What do you guys wanna do? Wanna do a bit of GTO training?
You wanted to cutoff button? Ones I ran. I think people play this fit, I I I think, well, I mean, I'm probably biased because I play this spot very poorly. But I've been looking at it, I've noticed that population plays it extremely poorly as well from the cutoff. They C bet way, 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 way too much. As do I.
And what stack depth are we gonna look at?
Well, I've been looking at forty, so I don't know what he has.
I have forty.
Uh, it's a seventy eight percent check, I think, from cutoff, I see bet probably.
Holy crap.
I probably see bet between somewhere between fifty and sixty percent.
And then out of position. Hmm. What was that? So, okay. Cut off versus button, we have it, we have it, we did it a hundred times already, let's go.
All right, well, didn't help me any.
Could be better.
Alright, so let's look at this spot quickly. Out of position, the cutoff here should be.
More about.
On. Checking around seventy five percent of that time, which is.
Yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit over seventy five, I think, actually, but yeah, closer than seventy five percent.
Okay, let's look at the average, actually. At the actual number.
Listen, is.
Yeah, I've ran, I ran a lot more hands, so maybe that's why I have a higher number.
Um.
I just, I know Toad did it too, he said seventy eight percent, so I was just going off memory, I think it was seventy seven point something, I'm close to, I'm close to seventy eight as well. And I ran mine.
Yeah, I haven't, like Matt said yesterday was a bit excessive, right? Do you hear him?
I didn't, I wasn't really paying attention, I can't watch play and play, I can't, oh, I, I can't.
Alright, so on average, we're checking seventy percent of the time, exactly. And then when we bet, it's like mostly small, right?
I think we use a lot of large sizes, actually.
We do, we do. So it's mixing, right, between like very large, large and some small bets, so we're only betting thirty percent of the time, right?
So out of that thirty percent, it's ten percent big bets and twenty percent small bets?
Yeah, and then it's like probably value driven a lot. And then we have even butt sizes and everything, so that's the cutoff strategy.
There's over bet, there's over bets on the flop, which is really cool.
Over bets on the flop, seriously?
Some.
Okay.
I think it's on like ace king boards, actually.
That's what it says there, it's Broadway.
And then this is the button strategy, once it's checked to him, he actually bets half of the time. So he bets more and it seems like he bets small.
Yeah, the button gets to, uh, obviously bluff, uh, has to try to find like all the bluffs. Like any backdoor, anything you have on those flops, you can just start going for it.
So his bluffs are gonna be equity driven there?
That's my perception, uh, not necessarily.
Okay.
Like that's why I can't figure it out, like it's a server goes fucking bad shit sometimes with stuff like, I don't even know why it's betting turn. Like I could barely find the flat bluff and then it still barrels turn when it does, nothing comes in a lot often.
Okay, so that would be.
It triple barrels sometimes, we just fucking like zero it with nothing.
Uh, do you think we should bet third pair here as the button?
I think we just check.
Not really, no.
I think it's gonna bet small.
But we need like some small bets or it's not gonna be easy.
Maybe with a spade for sure, maybe, I maybe have to have a spade, but I wouldn't be surprised if it bet small here.
If we get like, uh, queen, queen six or queen seven to fold. Like queen eight to fold, I think it's good, right? Uh. I'm ready, I'm ready to venture into a small bet, let's see. Yeah.
I think it's.
Mixing.
You just get the bet from position, man, back bet, but you have a hand, you bet.
Yeah. So we are actually betting with hands like third pair for mid position, then let's see, do we bet? Then let's see, do we bet a lot of third pairs? We bet every tree here. What do you guys think? I think we bet every tree. We don't have much trees. We only have one.
We get both of our threes.
Yeah, and we bet all our sevens and our sixes and fives and fours.
Well, it's interesting. Look at how we just, we bet kind of a lot, but we really only bet small, only, only.
Don't bet our sevens.
Yeah.
Uh, eight, seven bets.
Yeah. But our other sevens protect our checking range?
So is the nine, seven of hearts betting, I presume, eight, seven and nine hearts, yeah.
The backdoor flesh?
Yeah, and eight, seven saying be the same, yeah.
The, the, Jack to protect the checking range also, did the low jacks, jack eight, jack nine.
It could also improve with a straight.
Yep.
Right, straight draw.
Alright, so we are betting a lot. And then spades.
Go back to the root. Okay, there's no ever bets on this flop. You'll see when we get on like ace, king, ace, king, they'll be over bets.
We don't care if we have spades for the ace three.
Nope.
The three spades is no different. No, that's, that's a tiny bit less.
Yeah.
Now your quarter race floats with that, which is nice too, because you have the ace, right? So like if they had an ace, you're often going to have your aces up rotten and it just dominate them.
Yeah.
Uh, check.
Why you want to check her?
Because we, we do a lot of checking. We can check call, check raise, I think just answer calls.
Wouldn't mind to check raise here.
So this would be a check, yeah. And then I want to see the eights. Are they mostly checking the fives? Are they mostly checking? Yeah, and the jacks?
Are most two pair bets out.
Checking seven.
Your best jacks. And you do a lot of check, you'll do check raising, you gotta find like eighteen, twenty percent check raises probably.
I think this jacket is going to do it sometimes.
His jack checking, okay. I see, I see, I see. So we are heavily check raising, so we check. He's gonna bet either small or big, say bet small, or raising. Hmm, a lot.
Percent, seven, eighteen, seventeen percent.
Yeah, then if we bed big. Okay, so we raise almost as often, but our size change. Okay.
Would you hit range explorer on this just for a second? Okay. So imposition has the range advantage here and the nut advantage a little bit, but not advantages is closer.
The button is almost always going to have the range advantage, I think.
Yeah, it has a range advantage and the nut advantage here.
He's going to be more condensed around the jack and the eight?
Yeah, we have the range advantage on the high board flops, where they lack the aces and kings and stuff. That's about it.
So out of position is likely to be checking with second pair. And then check raising is best out pairs.
Okay, your draws that wrap around the top part, right?
Yeah.
And the bottom part.
Yeah.
So in this case, we're gonna, we're gonna call, we're gonna call this flop bet, but I'm gonna bet that there's going to be with this hand a reasonable percentage of check raises more than, I'm gonna say more than twenty percent check.
I think it's gonna call it a backdoor flush, honestly.
I'll find out.
Although it doesn't block any, it doesn't really block any bluff, so maybe you're right, Scott. It doesn't really block his um, drawing range at all, except maybe the backdoor hearts.
Yeah.
So you're, you know what, you're probably right. It might actually check race on it. I wouldn't do it. I don't, it might be in there.
I don't think it's gonna be more than fifty percent, but I don't, I, I, I don't think it's going to be a sliver.
This says here that if it's a nine eye flop, we're gonna bet pot that. Wanna see if that's true, just for fun?
Yeah, I think it might, nines might be in there, so I think, I think it's ace, king, I think I might have saw nines in the report. I haven't gotten this deep into it yet.
Hello, pile.
Think it's like nine, disconnected. Like nine, six, four, shit like that.
Well, seems more likely that we
Look at this.
Yep.
Look at this.
Is that, is that donk, donking pot for one third?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're sorry, leading card, leading.
See better.
Wow, nine high boards.
And there's over bets. We're gonna find some over bets when we get through into this.
On Okay, on King I flush drawboards, we can bet a single card of the suit. As well as front door and backdoor flushes, along with our best up pairs. Okay. Alright, so we already have some good notes, let's try to find some new ones. Check call with this?
Yep.
Yeah.
No bet, oh, there's no raising.
Are we checking?
Yep.
Yep.
Marginal made hat?
Just call.
It's still small.
It might even, it might even fall now, actually. Yeah, I was too fast.
And
I was too fast. It's just a fold. Two overs, there's two, but there's two overs, we're done.
Point five in EV, it's not too bad.
Yeah, it's a fold. There's two overs. We don't have a spade. We're done.
Oh, we won. You are, you're actually soul reading the solver.
Yeah, and it's not just, it's not just a, it's an over.
Like all the draws, all the draws get there as well.
Exactly.
Yeah. Or most of his draws, obviously, he's just, they look at the blush. Now look what I'm saying from the button. He, they just keep barreling. He's barreling with nothing there, right?
This, look at this, though. I have the exact spot. If the flesh completes on the turn, you're looking at calling a second big barrel, which we were facing with second pair, which we have.
Not anymore, though.
Need a card of the suit to hero call, so that
Yeah, he bet small. Well, he bet small and we didn't have a, a suit.
But we also didn't have second pair anymore.
I'm right.
Did he bet? Oh, he did, that's, no, he's betting geometry. That's nuts. Oh, no, thirty percent, okay? And then they say, exactly, look at this, you're calling if you have the ace's pain, so this heuristic is amazing.
Yep.
But notice button barrels his gutter with no suit of the card on the turn. He's just barreling the seven, drawing to like not even the nuts.
Drawing to nothing.
Well, he's drawing to a nine.
What, what end do you talk?
Jack, yeah.
The button barreled a seven of clubs.
Sometimes.
Well, he did, he just did it to us.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
So I mean, you get to really barrel a lot in position. Like as long as you have some, like, he has something here, but don't be spots where he has nothing.
So you would bet the hand with the nine in it?
Look, it's barreling six, five again. It's barreling twos, threes, fours.
He's only betting as far as
King, four, king, five, other spade, right? No, they're not, they're all suits, king, five, king, four, king, six, king, seven, they're all bound, right?
So the worst thing are, are trying to get better king eyes and some a size to fold. The worst a size are trying better a side, to get better a size to fold. Is that right?
Yep.
Bet small, you get some better king eyes to fold, and then they size up a bit, so if we size up a bit sixty five, we get better a size to fold, exactly. Alright. What do we do here?
Flo, float.
Yeah, we're gonna call.
Just call.
Um.
So we got a gutter, we're gonna, no, we don't, no, we don't, no, we don't. I don't know what to do.
I don't understand why we call. I just press the button.
So it's, it's weird because he's supposed to be, he's supposed to be checking most of the flops and he's supposed to be betting uh, based on value driven hats.
So we have an over backdoor flush, backdoor straight. It's enough to continue in position, I guess.
So I think we just have to check and take our king to showdown here against his value driven that flop bet.
So they're barreling like, you know, they're jack and queen X here a lot. They're nine X, jack X, queen X, haven't made a hand yet. That's what they're, that's what out of position is going to be barreling. Usually it's the first two overs to the top card, I think.
Alright.
And against population, we should be very willing to do this call because they see that even more than the solver, we think. Right? In this spot?
Yeah, they're gonna bet more than thirty percent.
No, I didn't mean not higher, they, more often.
Yeah. Yeah, they're like, they're gonna bet more than thirty percent of the time.
Gotcha.
Right? Solvers only betting thirty percent of the time here.
I don't think, if they bet more than the solver does, I don't think we're, I don't think the counters call more. I think you could start raising, less raising more because they have more air.
Yeah.
But this particular hand, do you want to raise this hand? I guess, population?
I, I, I don't know. I'm not looking. I'm just listening.
I wouldn't raise.
It's, it's just king high.
Alright, so we can call with like one over and a backdoor, is that right?
We have two backdoors.
Yeah, but if we only add one, it would fold.
Let's see.
King four is full. Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, which is also a backdoor, but it's a shitty backdoor. It's an ignorant.
Alright, so now let's look at a ten, eight, like deuce, because we wouldn't have the same thing.
Right. Technically, we still have this, we still have that same backdoor, but it's much worse, but it's just
I don't think having an over card to the bottom card is very relevant because they aren't going to be barreling nose. Uh, rarely, if ever. Yeah, see, we're still gonna fall because it doesn't, the threes, like, they're not betting ace three, I don't think. I mean, maybe they are, but I don't think they are.
We're
A little bit.
We're calling king. We're folding ace. That's weird.
In fact, they don't have many threes to be barreling, actually, so I think that's more relevant. They don't really have that many threes to be betting at all, so having it over to the bottom court is not really worth anything.
That has to do with the connectivity of the straight with ten and the eight, right? So the seven, the nine is better, the jack is better.
Right.
Yeah. But isn't that weird that we have some king, we have a little bit of king six and no ace six? Here's what, here's, here's what my guess is gonna be. We don't call with the ace six because we want him to be betting. We want him to be betting when he's ace high.
And I don't think they just bet ace highs. It has to have some kind of draw.
Right, well, I'm just, I mean.
How could we call king six here? Like the six is what? It's not even the gotcha, it's like
No, but it, but it has the chance to
The backdoor straight?
You know, it's interesting, the heart.
So it will be a backdoor straight with the back, so a runner, runner, backdoor straight.
So actually, the flush, the second card on the board is the backdoor flush we really want to have. We want to just cut it down to that. Like if we just want to call king six with the backdoor flush, it's best just to call it hearts, the second card.
Runner, runner, backdoor straight is redundant and, and also repetitive.
Yeah, runner, winner, backdoor straight. Pretty good. Well, it's the same as the backdoor flush, right? Runner, runner, backdoor flush.
Yeah, yeah.
But look at the king six flushes. The hearts is the only one making money, really.
Well, barely, when he versus point nine, so it's
It's barely But if you want to split hairs and not defend those, just defend the one that matches up with the second card.
Okay, so we call. We're geniuses. Now this card comes. We're hating our call. How did we get here? Who's to blame for it? Uh. How are we supposed to proceed?
Check behind.
Yeah, like the, the problem is the three is not good.
Hmm, I think we're gonna bet like, uh, two thirds.
Why?
Of the pot, or two thirds of the time.
We can get a lot of the ace highs to fall. We can get king high to fold.
He's not supposed to lead the flop without a value driven hand, though, really? He's only betting thirty percent.
He has draws as well, right? It's not just value. Whenever you bet for value, you gotta bluff as well.
Uh, Ken? Can you swear on the Bible that you're not cheating, please?
I'm not cheating, no. I wondered, did, did, uh, I guess Billings never betting, they're never betting their underpair, so
You wanna, if, if it's a thing, I'd need you to explain it to me again.
Well, I don't know.
I bet big because you're trying to get better king eyes to fold and some a size. If it's what your strategy is, it feels good, man. It feels like a great strategy, but I just don't feels bad.
I think we can get, I, see, I don't think he ever bets like twos, fours, sixes. I guess, I guess you would bet sixes, I guess you would bet sixes and sevens, so we can might be able to get sixes and sevens of vaults of a size and king high.
He, he, he convinced me.
Backdoor flush, the club, hold on, one more point. The club is good to bluff, I think, because any backdoor flushes, he bet on the flap all brick.
And does he bet his backdoor flashes?
He's gonna bet some, some will be in his bluffing range, right? Like he's got to find plus for his value and someone that's going to be backdoor flushes that maybe had backdoor straight draws as well, or an over card or some shit like that, so.
Hey, um, I don't think he's, I don't think he's betting his ace high on that flop. Um, and we're beating a lot of his bluffs, like we're beating, uh, queen nine that has a backdoor flash that didn't continue, right? Like the three doesn't tip that to value that he now has Z with the three? So, um, because he didn't have ace high here, I don't think we're getting ace highs to fold. So I think we can take our king high to showdown.
It might even just bet small, it might even just bet small. I, I think it's gonna bet, I think, and maybe a small bet is fine.
What are you, what are you doing from the cutoff if you have a hand like king nine?
They gotta fold.
Or like
I don't know. I think a small bet is enough to accomplish it as well.
I don't think a king nine is a lead for him, though. Right? Like, maybe king nine is, but ace nine's.
Maybe king nine of hearts, sometimes he's passing a bit.
Hearts, diamonds.
A big maybe, but.
I, I think actually a small bet might be good.
Alright, no, you convinced me for a big bet. I need a side to fold sometimes. To make money here, if A side doesn't fold, I'm not putting chips here. We need better king eyes to fold. We need maybe.
I think we're gonna have two bet sizes and I think this probably is gonna go forty-eight and we're gonna have other hands with more equity that are gonna bet larger.
You need to stop changing your answer. You already convinced me.
Well, the more I think, the more I like, I, I come up with some bullshit.
Yeah, but let's bet big and see. Oh, my goodness, Ken.
I'm good. Even bets, even bets pot. So, I mean, you just get a lot of blush on the button, man. And I think the key, I really think if you change that three to a diamond heart or spade, it's gonna change this a lot, I think. It doesn't, huh?
Nope.
So that's just like completely fictitious in my mind.
You know what changes? When the backdoor flush bricks? Look at the one, the pot size. Pot size, if the backdoor flush comes in, is not a thing. The hard comes, it's not part, a major part of the strategy. Diamonds, it is there, but not much. But if it's a club.
Uh.
Doubling up.
So that's cool. So that's definitely a thing to break. It's just, uh, how we interpret our, we go with to a large bed size. Larger, more often.
But yeah, and even more checking, though, when it, when it's the brick.
And then do we have small bets if the backdoor flush comes in? No. No, we don't have any small bets.
I get a ton.
We still don't have any small size, right?
Mm-mm, no.
Pretty weird. Hmm.
Cause we're mostly gonna check.
Right. Fun to look at. I love this. Um.
So I think to get up.
Yeah. Yeah. We didn't get nines to fold.
If we bet small on the turn, do we barrel? The river?
No.
Not really a thing on the turn, it's about small, it look like.
Yeah, it's either check and take your king high to showdown against his marginal made hand. Um, or his bluffs that have given up already. Right? We don't wanna put more ships in the pot there. When the three turns, because it doesn't change the board for him.
Did we look at what we fold out with the large bet? I mean, it must be a lot.
So if he's folding in any A side, always folding plenty of A sides. Look at this mix. Wow, mostly folding ace king on this turn. So we take a hand like king six, we get ace king to fold. That's just amazing. That's why I loved your idea, Ken. Bottom of the range, kind of these kind of games. You have this spot really well.
And so we did bet under pairs as well. Like, I didn't think he would bet twos and fours and threes. I don't know why they're not there. I guess he doesn't bet threes on the flop. Oh, he's betting them on a turn. I see. He makes a, uh, set. So, yeah, so twos and fours are folding as well. I didn't think he bet them on the flop. So that's even a few more combos.
Interesting how he folds his ace king and calls his ace queen. On the turn.
Uh, ace. What's he do?
Check, check folds ace king, but he check calls ace queen more often. Riddle me that, man.
He unblocks our king high blocks.
Ah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of our little kings here that wanna give us stab when he has ace king, he blocks them. Whereas we're not really stabbing with queens. Our queens kind of have equity. Or, yeah, our queens are definitely equity.
Lot to learn on this spot.
Very nice.
Both sides of the coin.
Yeah. Right, pocket fives are. Check, huh?
And gives up.
Check fold because it's a nice.
If we had a heart and a spade, it would, uh, it's a big bet versus a small bet. If we had a heart and a spade, it would call. If I don't understand why. But that's how it does it. It's not a good call, but it would. Like a not making money call.
Versus the big bet, okay, I just. Yeah, so.
If you look, I'm pretty sure if you have both of the suits, it might, versus a small bet, with both of the suits on the board, I think it calls.
Are you calling with the five of spade?
I think you have to have both suits, the heart and this, I think you have to have a five of spades and a five of hearts.
What about nope?
Versus a small bet.
What about nope against the big bet? You never call with five.
No, no, but put a small bet up.
Just a spade is fine.
Diamonds and clubs fold for sure, right? I mean, it's not making any money, but spade and hearts is the best, right?
Yeah. Well, no, it's really spades.
Well, spade and heart is the best overall, slightly.
Yeah.
Half a jet more.
Oh.
I think we go all.
Backdoor straight, backdoor flush. Yeah, easy call.
What kind of hand?
Have it over. We don't have it over, which sucks, so.
We have a raising range.
I don't, not with under, not with two underpiles, I don't think so.
So it would be like a queen, jack of hearts?
Maybe. I think, I think you still wanna call in position.
Calling is fine, if we have a raising hair, a raising ranger, what does it look like?
Probably front door flushes mostly that wrap around the ten.
So queen, jack of spade, over cards from their flushes or any from their flushes? So what do you do here with seven, six of spade?
I think seven, six of spades might be a good, I, I think in position, you just wanna call mostly, honestly.
What about six, eights, si- pocket pair, sixes, eights, sixes, sevens, eights, which we have? I think.
Feel like, I, I, I don't know. Like, I honestly, honestly don't know, but I think on this, we just wanna call paired flaps probably mostly in position.
Pure call. Let's. What kind of hands do we raise here?
Cause like he could just have a ten, right?
A ten.
So we're raising tens, yeah.
We wanna raise a ten. And then. Why are clubs and diamonds raising?
We'll draw with the ace, I guess, or just like low, super low equity plus, we don't care if we fold.
So what about spades? Are mostly checking. Check calling. What about hearts? Are mostly calling. Queen, jack of spade, mostly calls. So we only raised ten percent of the time and it's almost only tens we raised. Then nine eight.
And we still call them most of the time.
Look at this. The nine eight is kind of interesting because we bet every one, we raise, we could raise all the other ones, but never with the backdoor flush.
It's too good.
And look at the equity of the call. We're making one chip on one hundred thirty. It's like.
That's very good.
Everything is red.
Watch page and now it's page in the spots, making a turn.
Yeah. Yeah, but. Yeah, spades. Okay, we hit it.
Just call.
Are you serious? When are you gonna raise? Are you ever?
We don't have a hand or we, we still don't have a hand.
Okay. So now we shove to explore in case he has a ten?
Nah, I bet half pot.
Half pot.
Well, because we don't have the nuts.
What do you mean?
Better flushes, he's got four houses.
There's no way he checks with any of these. When he checks here, he just.
Uh, he will check the stone call. If he has fives or sixes full here, he will check.
Does he make, does he have some tens in his checking range?
Probably, yeah, for sure. Cause you wanna get called by more than tens, too. Like, you wanna get called by, you wanna still get called by sevens, eights, dines. Jacks. Queens, kings, aces. I don't wanna just blast it. I think half pot's fine.
Yeah, what do you think he does if he has pocket jacks? Then we go all in and he has a heart in his end.
I don't know. I think our more nutted hands bet bigger. I think these marginally nutted hands bet half pot.
I'm really gonna go all in.
Yeah, I'm on team Louis here. You gotta get greedy when you get this there.
Yeah, if he has a ten, we get paid. If he has a hand like pocket jack with the jack of hearts, he's gonna be put on the needle. Solver probably calls. Uh, people like they get pocket queens there, you think, you think they're gonna fold? No, they check because.
Overpairs with a heart, I think any overpairs with a heart would be betting themselves.
Hmm, don't think so. I don't think so.
I would, like, if I was in position, I would bet all my pairs with a heart.
Yeah, but that's his ranger. So he has some, oh, yeah, not, not that often.
I'm on team pot size.
Pot size.
That's what I'm on team, but I don't know, but you, you're on team two X. You're on team show.
I'm on.
Two X is really bad. I think two X is really bad. I think bot, or, or at bot's good.
Alright, so I got one and a half bets.
Oh.
Team pot size.
Team pot size, Scott was right. Alright.
You gotta have a more nutted hand to go over pot.
Does he call us? Does he call our bet with sevens?
There is levels of nuttedness. That the solver kinda how it structures its betting sizes.
Queen high board. Do we ever bet big on a queen high board? Is this?
I think we could probably bet, I think we can bet large on this flop because.
I don't think so. Don't think he has enough interaction.
Has to defend, uh, his straight draws, his backdoor flush draws that are connected, like any kind of like backdoor flush draws with straights.
If we, if we bet big, he does not have to defend all of them.
If he has like ace, jack, backdoor flushes, he's calling.
Yeah, they're good ones, sure, but if he has like ace three or ace seven of hearts here and you bet big, he's.
He's got like six, seven, nine, seven. Um, he's gonna have pairs, like he can't fold a pair of like eight X yet. He can't fold any queen X. I, I'm betting sixty-five.
You think it's a spot to get greedy here? I like going up, sizing up for value here with my best queens with this one as well.
Yeah.
Yep, sixty-five sounds good.
That's right. I would have.
Still have checks for, uh.
Yeah.
Check raise.
Check raising, oh, that, that dirty turn.
So I'm checking here.
Yeah.
Okay, no, we're betting again.
Nah, it's still mostly checks.
Yep.
Call this one?
Oh, yeah.
Diamond.
Oh, it raised.
Hmm. Yeah.
It just raises right away. That's pretty cool.
Yeah. We check all.
We blocked the king and diamonds, so check call.
Yeah, check call.
Wow. How does he check this back?
See, when we bet big on the, um, when we bet large on the flap and get called. And we don't have the top pair, it's stuck that pair, uh, I think we gotta check a lot, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they did bet almost half the time, but I still think checking is better.
So we're betting small here?
Uh, he gets to bet large on this flop a lot, I think. So I don't know what to do.
Bet small?
I think I would check back.
No, uh, it's, it's, it's bet bigger check here, right?
Yeah, well, he's check raising. See, this is why I wanted to check, cause I, this is a texture he's supposed to bet large. When he checks, I feel like I'm getting set up.
No, 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 no. It's not supposed to be big here.
Oh, he's checking a lot.
Yeah.
No, like us, we're supposed to bet big or, or check.
We were check, yeah, we were checking like eighty-five percent, right?
And we're mixing heavily.
Oh, sixty.
We do have a mostly big bets. And then.
Now we're putting a blender.
Yeah, but you know this guy?
I'm falling.
I'm calling. With the backdoor flush, yeah, I think we have to call.
I'm falling.
Look at this, not giving up already.
Yeah, so do we.
I was just gonna say, when they.
Oh, yes.
When they check, we bet.
Yeah.
No, no, we check behind.
No, no, but yeah, but when they, when they check raise flop and then check turn, we do a lot of betting.
Or particular.
And that's, I've seen that in like every position. When we're in position, no matter what it is, if we're like in position versus the blinds, we're in position to any other spot. I noticed that a lot when we get check raised and they check turn, we're supposed to bet a lot.
Okay, close our eyes and put it in here.
Fifty fifty, Ken.
I'm not even closing my eyes here.
Snapping it off.
Yeah, happy snap.
Wow, pretty precarious.
Yeah. We got there.
He was gonna go for a double check raise.
No one.
I bet he was.
On the turn?
Yeah. Check, bet, call.
Yes, he was.
Yep.
Upper dangler. Can we bet it? Do we have really checker? It's the, these low connected boards that we lead a lot on.
Uh, yeah, we have, um, a gutter. So I, I prefer to have like suited combo with, with the flush draw.
No, no, no. It's fine here. I'm not sure about sizing.
Yeah, I think we can bet for sure, best small.
Yeah, we're gonna say we have margin, like, we have worse nines to bet. I think ace nine wants to check there.
Probably like worst nines. Yeah, you're right.
Or worse nines are actually better, like, uh, they can make better straights, right? Like, uh.
No, like queen nine, queen nine.
Nine, yeah.
All of our worst nine, uh, it's mixing, right?
It's mixing pretty hard.
Okay.
Good to have the gutter.
I'd like to check here.
I'm betting.
Why?
Cause it just likes to bet.
Get value for more safe size when we bet.
You got a Broadway draw, uh, you know. Whatever.
But if we leave a hand like jack ten and, and, and this spot, then we hit the jack on the turn, it's gonna be very good for us.
Well, jack ten, I'd rather have this than jack ten.
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is villain if he has a jack. And we hit the jack on the turn, could be very good for, for us. So I don't see the benefit of betting here because we don't get like ace queen is not gonna fold, ace king, maybe we get ace king, but you know, there is no value. We beat all the king eyes, we beat all the A size, don't need to bet here.
Yeah, and you could get check raised off here.
Yeah, and we don't have a heart.
I think not having a heart's good and I think black and spades is kinda good, too.
I'm checking. It's betting sometimes. But my guess is that we'd rather bet with worse A size here. Definitely. Look at this. Worse A size are betting.
Yeah, they all.
They all have five. They all have straight interaction. Yeah.
But what about ace eight?
It, it still can turn a six or a seven and like it still has, like, that's the difference. Ace nine has nothing, right?
Uh, ace, eight suited bets about as often as ace jack off, pretty much the same.
Yeah, look at that. Look at the offsuit. That's, that's where you're gonna get that answer. Look at the ace nine, the ace ten and the ace jack. Those are all the same hand and they seem. Uh, the ace nine bets a little more. Uh, the ace nine bets a little more than the ace ten.
Yeah, it looks like it wants to go, right?
The ace jack bets a little more than the ace nine.
Does the ace jack bet more without a heart?
Bet less without a heart.
Uh.
Look at the bottom, right?
Ace, spades, jack. It's all about the same, I can't really see a distinction.
Yeah, it seems to not care about, uh, it, but it does prefer to have a, a heart or a, a spade, one of them.
Uh. Yeah.
Yeah, blocking the value continues.
Spade or a heart.
Yeah. And for spade or harder, sometimes both.
Yeah, and I guess eight, nine bets a little more than ace ten because ace nine can get ace ten to fold.
Yeah.
So this is better checked probably, honestly.
Like, we get worse a side to fold when we. When we bet, so it's not really interesting.
But I do, I mean, the guys to value, there's some value in cleaning up equity, uh, you can be betting for value here, right? Like, if we have the best hammer, extra value betting, we can still get worse to call, he's got draws.
Yeah.
And we're in position, so like, you know, we can. Sometimes better get on the turn to buy river, we can just give up, whatever.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
So what about now? Check again?
We can check, we can check and then call the river as long as it's not a heart.
Just gonna say, it doesn't check, it doesn't really like to give up on the button.
Yeah, but it was still mostly checking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, easy call.
Call.
I would fold.
Mixing.
And of course.
It raises too. See, it's raising because it wants to bet turn, I think, it likes to bet bet a lot.
So last time we didn't bet with kind of this hand, right?
Yeah, I would check. Just call.
No raising here.
Nah. Check him up.
Really, do we have a lot of sevens, we do? Does he have any seven?
Do we have sevens that we check, that we check called?
Yeah.
Or we check raise them?
No, no. I have a bunch, we just check call, we check raise the best and the worst ones.
We pretty much just peeled for our overcards and backdoor flush, we break, so I think it's just a check fold. Uh, hold on, now you might wanna, I guess we're not gonna bluff ace high, so just check, I guess.
Check call, we have an easy call here. Oh my.
So much for an easy call.
Alright, he wins.
Yeah, we have fold. Not hero calling that.
Bastard.
So which is bluff, is he like ace high, like a single ace of spades?
Ace of hearts.
I mean hearts, yeah, that's what I meant.
Ace of hearts. Flashes. Fives.
And he bets that size the most.
Yeah.
When he bets, he bets five hundred.
Yeah.
Wow. I hate this guy.
I hate him too, pocket tree, oh my goodness.
But it, yeah, it's counterfeit. Right? If he gets there with threes. If he gets there with threes and twos, it doesn't block anything, so.
Double paired boards, we usually bluff for under pairs, that's another common theme across a lot of spots.
Hmm. We have a card of the suit here, and this board is not really good for us. Right, not very good, eight?
Yeah, that's not good for either of us, though.
So we're gonna be betting like. Uh, wait, eight, nah, yeah, we can bet this, we can bet this.
Can we?
Yeah, cause we can go, uh, we can make a straight still, queen high.
Yes.
Yeah. We gotta, we gotta bet, cause we're gonna check with better, better hands, ace high, king high, so.
Is this a barrel?
Uh.
No, we didn't pick up any equity.
We block, hold on, we block his floats with backdoor spades.
We're at the middle of the.
Right, brick. He's not checking over pairs much, right, I think we can bet, I think we just gotta, I think this is one of the spots where it just likes to lose its shit.
I will.
I, I think.
We can get king high to fold, ace high to fold.
King highs are already folding the flop.
I hate to, I hate to say it, but I agree with Ken here, I think we have to, I think we have to size up, and I think we have to bet, I think we have the barrel here.
Oh, we do.
Uh, you just lose your shit, that's what I'm saying, this is why this spot is so interesting.
Never check, never give up, never surrender.
Understand this spot.
The six had, he had, he has no range interaction with the six. Very, very little range interaction with the six, so.
So.
I mean, the button loses its shit in this, in this, it's really cool.
Why? I don't know yet.
That's why I've been wanting to work on it for a while. I wanna spend a few months on this like we did on the blind, so I learn it in depth.
We get better king eyes to fold, we get some ace eyes to fold.
Yep.
I'm, I'm making forty big blinds, a hundred now, as it is from the big blind, I learned how to play it, I fucking get seventy. I don't even know how to play it right, and I make, like, I don't even know what I'm doing on the big blind, and I'm making like almost forty.
I mean, you're making profit on the big blind?
I mean button.
Okay, thank you.
Savage.
What do you do now, mister double barrel?
Ah. I give up.
Yeah, so we bet. We bet small, and then we bet big, and so I think this is a situation where we just have to give up.
Alright.
Right, once he's called the big bet.
Yep.
Yep.
Wow.
But that is a disgusting call.
How does he call with the spade in his hand on the turn, what a fucking piece of fish.
Cause he knows he's beating queen high, like. Yeah, no one in the right mind calls that turn bet.
Look at this, he's.
Oh.
Folding the king of spade, but calling with the queen of spade, no one's saying would call. Wow, check here.
Yep.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it's a paired board, we probably pay. Some of our low equity buffs, we could just bet and give up with. On a paired flop.
Check again?
No.
No, but.
Go back to a flush.
We haven't, now we have a flush draw.
Did we miss a flop, see bet there?
Yeah, that's why I thought, I thought it would bet, cause it's kind of a low equity buff, um, we have the backdoor spade. Could possibly make some sort of straight. Maybe just get some auto folds, right? Worth a small bet.
Now that the flush completed, do we size up?
Nah, cause we're still drawing, I don't think we want, I mean, we, we have a spade.
But we don't, we don't wanna polarize our hand here.
Nah, and like, and it's a paired flop, it's a paired board too, so I'm always cautious to really go crazy, even with flushes on pair. Flops.
I think we go bet bet here.
I mean, I'm betting for sure with the, now that we picked up a spade, I mean, I would have bet flop at turn. When we picked up the spade.
Bet the flop, we have to bet the turn now.
Yeah, but we didn't.
Both understand.
We checked.
Saying we're supposed to, we're supposed to.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um. Why do we bet here still? On this texture?
Well, we have flush, we have straight draws, backdoor flush, and we can't, uh, get there with an over, so I think we just clear up some, we, we just get some. You know, we get some amount of folds right away with this hand, if we get raised, we, it's an easy fold.
To do with the amount of sixes that we have pre-flop?
I'm making fun of Josh here. Because I wanna see pair boards based on the.
I mean, I have all the paired boards in this spot.
Oh, you have some of the boards, right?
I have them, actually, yeah, I guess I could pull them, I could find them, hold on.
Show us what you have real quick.
It might have to do with the nut advantage here, cause he doesn't flat with many sixes, whereas we open with more sixes. So I think because we have the nut advantage, we get to bet infrequently and large here.
Wow. Sir Keppel?
I, I was getting it together, give me a second. Um.
So I think the turn would be a large.
Now that I just, uh.
Close this, you don't wanna print it.
How often do we check our flush draw on that pair board?
So when the board is paired with a nine. Yeah.
The queen high flop. And what's paired?
The six.
Just tell us what is, like, I don't even know what this, what Josh makes this.
Uh, this is basically pair boards based on which card is paired.
Okay.
I have a note here that says the nine is the key card, and it's very clear here as well, we can see it. So this one is for out of position, this is the cut-off overview strategy on pair boards. So if the nine is paired. We're betting the most, and then if we look at six sideboards, that's interesting because. Whenever the board is paired and it's under the nine, it looks like we are mostly sizing up.
Yeah.
It's not really the case above like the jack. Like, if it comes queen, queen deuce, we're mostly checking or betting small, but if it comes like eight, eight deuce, we're mostly betting big. Very interesting.
Okay, so I think theoretically, what this probably means is, like, um, we are opening. We have aces, kings, queens. And jacks that the button probably doesn't have, it might have jacks at some frequency. So the lower the paired board is, the more. Like middling pairs they can defend with when we bet large with our best pairs. Does that make sense? There's more value, the bigger our hand.
It's gonna be exactly, exactly that, pocket nines, pocket tens, pocket jacks, because we have all of these in range, right? Whereas the opener, we are, we're not capped in, in pairs, whereas the button is capped in terms of pairs. So we want probably to, let's see. Actually, that's exact, yeah. Pull up a nae-tai board. Here? No, yes. A pair, so queen eight eight, for example.
I mean, I have all the pairs, you want me to do it, might be a little faster.
Sure.
See, um. So. Did you say it?
Yeah. So definitely we're sizing up a lot, but it's not like the main part of the strategy, give me another eight, eight board.
What I was saying, saying was like, if it's a nine.
I click on eight, eight first.
So like nine, nine. Two, right, um. Button is gonna have. Button has all this, three, four, five, six, sevens, eights in range, right? So we get to get a lot of value with our over pairs, they can never fold any of this stuff. But it's not actually betting large ever.
No, because we also have the nut advantage with, with nines, right?
So wants to keep these hands in.
Yeah, because we all, we just have all the nines.
Just betting a lot because you have all the.
Yeah, but the, on the graph, it wasn't very clear, so show me a, a five, five board, pair of five board.
Which one?
Um, hang on.
Those are not good ones.
I lost control of my computer for a second. Um. Altery, or whatever, whichever, doesn't matter. But it could be ace five five. So I wanna see the root strategy. Is it only big bets? It's never really only big bets. So ace five five now, please? Should not be any big bets, yeah, so not all pair boards are created equal.
I'm betting with the best aces for value and its best fives.
King, king nine, yeah, it's not gonna go. It's always gonna be checking or betting small, yeah. And then if you're looking at like. Look at. Jack six, six. I bet. I bet that this one is gonna go super polar. Yeah. And then. Okay, so.
Why, why is this?
Because of the high card, say you have a hand like pocket ten here, you're still underneath the top card. But if the board is nine, six, six, and you have pocket ten or pocket jack, you're gonna blast. So make it ten, six, six. Or nine, six, six. Oh, nine, six, six is gonna be even better. Nine, six, six, not nine, nine, six.
Uh, I don't know, I don't know if nine will, because nine's the key card, so nine is gonna wanna range that more.
Make it eight, six, six. See?
Yeah, like forty percent, all bets.
Make it eight, six, six.
Yeah. Yeah, there it's polar for you.
So explain this to me again, I'm still not grasping what you're saying here.
Okay, if, if the board is ace, six, six, we are only gonna bet small. Because hands like tens, jacks, queens. Hey, what's up, man? So.
No, they, they can't get a lot of value because there's an ace on the board, is what you're saying.
Exactly, we're gonna be scared with like pocket tens, we're gonna bet small and infrequently, whereas here, we wanna blast for value.
Cause we have, uh, all the over pairs.
Yeah.
And then, um. Button really doesn't, right, like, it's got some, but. It doesn't really start getting them until nines.
Yeah, and if you also look the paired card. Like, he's devoid of lots of pairs that are small, so we're, we're up, like, we're not gonna get. We're not gonna get coolerd by a guy who has a six.
They're not gonna be able to raise, they're not gonna be able to raise this.
Yeah.
We never get raised, right?
Yeah, so we just get to go bananas with our, with our big bets there.
I mean raises, but it's like not really a thing.
Yeah.
Top pair. Top pair, over pair. So it's like he's gotta have like ace, eight, nines.
And king, six.
And then like this, these are pretty cool. Uh, I mean, this is like a bluff, actually, kind of.
Yeah.
He's got a redraw. So it's really, uh.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
Something blew up in the pile that the clubs, diamonds, hearts, spades, spades symbols went away.
I didn't hear that very well.
I said someone blew up in the pile. The clubs, diamonds, hearts and spades symbols went away and changed into CDHS.
Because I can't, I, I can only say it that I can't. The other way, I changed it for myself.
Never mind.
Yeah, I keep mixing myself up with the symbols because the diamonds and spades looks, they always look very similar to me unless I have my glasses on. I make a lot of mistakes, so.
Me too. That's why I love the four color deck. You know what I mean? Cause they, I think we all make those mistakes sometimes.
Uh, yeah.
Hey Andrea, here's one for you. So on this one, I'm gonna finish it. Well.
Stop that. We picked up, oh, not big.
No, that's small, right?
Yeah, we pick up backdoor flush, but you spent small here.
That's right. Andrea, the next one is on you.
Hold on a second. I'm trying, I, I minimize the screen and now I can't make it big again. God dang it. What am I doing wrong, Louis?
Everything.
Oh, okay, that's funny. Ha, ha. Okay, I got it. You're, don't, don't quit your day job, Louis, okay? Go for it. I'm ready, big boy.
Um.
That is my day job.
Yeah, your day job, but not his, okay? A comedian, he is not. Poker player, yes. Comedian, no, okay? Just so we got that out of the way. And ladies, man, excuse me.
What do you do here, Andrea?
Okay, well, um, I just now, okay, I'm, I'm a hero. Um, you mean, okay, it's on me.
Yeah.
I think I want to check.
I kind of agree with this.
No, 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 no. I think.
Our best king eye, Ken?
I think we're definitely betting and I think we might actually bet large.
For the jack?
Cause we block, uh, diamonds and hard backdoor floats.
Okay, well Andrea said check, we're gonna check. Oh, Andrea is right, or betting small.
What's new?
Yeah.
I'm joking, folks.
What do you do here?
Big fish. What do I do here?
Yeah.
I, I might, I might want to represent that I have two diamonds. Um, I probably gonna bet. I, I'd say I'd, I'd, and probably like half pot. I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to fake him.
Okay, well, maybe we should size up here.
I think I have a diamonds.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm down with six, five. That's fine.
That's right. Yeah, it's a thing. Oh, no.
Oh, now we're screwed. Now I would fold now.
Okay, well, you played it perfectly, Andrea. Well done.
I can't believe those words just came out of your mouth. Are you recording this so that I can play it on endless loop?
Can you open it in range? Can you open it in pile? I'm just curious what the big bets are.
On what street?
Uh, flop.
For us?
Yep.
Do we have any big bets on ten eyes? I don't think.
They are. I mean, we have some. I don't.
I think it's nine high we have.
Oh, no, it wasn't. There wasn't any big bets at all.
Nine, nine, if we make this board nine high something. Nine, five bullshit. Nine, five doos. I think nine high is gonna size up a lot.
Yeah, so here the, the bets that we're gonna have that are big are pocket jacks, right? When we get there with pocket jacks. On that ten, nine banana.
And then I want to look at the graph again real quick, forty big line, because I think I have a bit of an idea. Out of position, the graph. So my guess is that, oh, we don't really have them. So low boards, we size up. Yeah, what, what other graph did you have, Ken? You have the paired ones? Do you have the one?
I have, I have rainbow.
Rainbow out of position?
Yeah, I have them all.
Show me. Cause right now I'm guessing whenever that board comes nine high or lower, out of position gets to size up. And then whenever it's ten, I or higher, it never does that.
Uh, but in position you want?
Uh, out of position.
Since we're looking at this in pile, when we bet the flop, which we do half the time with the king, queen, do we barrel the turn on the second ten?
Uh, no. No, I don't think so, but we're gonna look it up. Okay, so yes, it's very clear. Whenever it comes nine higher or lower. When we bet, we bet big. Okay, so mostly using sixty-five percent and even pot size.
I don't know why this is blurry.
Yeah, it is really blurry.
Yeah, because you didn't save it well. Okay, very interesting.
And, um. Hold on. So this is when it's checked to us. What was that? A ten high flop?
Yeah.
Uh, we only bet really size up ace and six.
Yeah, because the six has no range for him, which is why I thought we would size up on the, the turn when we had that, uh, that other one.
So the heuristic. Yeah, I picked up an heuristic for out of position. If the board comes nine high or lower. Or out of position is mostly using the bigger size and even some pot size. If the board comes ten high or higher, we check eighty percent of the time. And show me again the other one. We almost never size up.
What do you mean?
Uh, is the board is ten high or higher?
Oh. I mean, ten high gets in there. I mean, jack high really is when it's. Means ten percent, uh, twenty percent on ten high. That's pretty good. We're only betting twenty. Five percent or thirty percent and most of it's big on ten high. In fact, when we bet jack high, it's like eighteen percent and half the time it's big.
Very nice. All right, let's get back.
And then it's, uh, then when you get to clean, king and ace high, it's mostly small.
Yeah, this is, this is the out of position player, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is a cutoff.
Gotcha. Okay.
I just, what did he ask for? Um, I, Peter, I, I'm not, uh, at liberty to do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, only because I don't make them.
Okay.
So that's kind of like, uh.
Yep.
Up to, uh, LP and Josh, I think.
Yeah, got that.
You can screenshot them in the, in these, obviously.
Yeah, you need to screenshot them ideally.
Yeah, they're a little, yeah, they're fuzzy. So I was like, okay, I'll clean them up.
Yeah, we're gonna get nice ones when, when Mr. Slacker is gonna be around.
Uh, well, I, I can clean them up myself. I still have access to the originals. Like, I'll have to fix these.
Yeah.
All right, so, so far, so good.
Oh, we were gonna look, we were gonna look at the solver on the last one for when we, when we do bet the flop, if we follow up on the turn.
Looks like it is using some butt size a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so one other thing I'm thinking about is a job.
I'm also thinking about that.
Everyone forgets to mute.
So what was that question come?
So on the flop. We're gonna bet, instead of checking the flop, we're gonna bet the flop this time.
Yeah.
And we're gonna bet small.
Yeah.
And his response, so he calls.
And then comes on the turn.
He can.
Check.
Give up or do we continue?
A backdoor flush, we're gonna. Uh, wait, is this, is this the same board? Didn't it was under three to a flush on the last stand?
No, it was a pair board like this. Uh, Ken, can you control it for a couple of minutes? I'll be right back.
Wait a second, the last hand was. Oh, I thought you were talking about this hand still.
No, 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 the, the, the ten, nine. And on ten pairs. We rep, we, we've rep the ten. Do we continue our bluff? On this ten when checked to.
So.
So roll over to keep, just roll over to.
All and check.
Yeah, so roll over onto the king, under our king, queen offsuit.
So we have.
That's what we have.
We're betting.
And we're betting, okay, yeah, so we do, we continue. And do we care about suits? We'd like to have a diamond.
Yeah, we bet a lot more with diamond.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you want to block their continues, I guess.
Good, okay. That's what I request when we double barrel. Does anybody care if we triple barrel? This?
Uh, you won't make, you were.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're here. I think I'm gonna get, I think we're gonna give up.
Bye, I don't know.
We'll see.
This is slow.
Yeah. So I think we continue and I, I, I think we're gonna, we'll, we'll size up.
What's the, I don't even know what the board is, so it's.
Kind of diamonds on the turn?
Yeah, we're right there.
Check, check.
Right, so now.
On the flop?
No, yeah, so change the check, check on flop. To check bet.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna bet a lot, right?
Yeah, that's small.
Right, good. Now with ten diamonds. He's gonna check.
This is wonky.
Yeah, and we're gonna, and we're gonna size up to, uh, one oh four. Make sure that that's a thing.
That was a thing.
Okay, good. That's what we're gonna do.
B calls?
Yep.
What was the river?
Uh, we didn't get one, so make up, so let's put, let's put a, uh, blank on the river.
Who the clubs? Respaid, something like that.
Yep, okay. Checks. Do we bet the king, queen? Do we continue the bluff? Yes, we do half the time.
Yep.
And now we want to. What do we, what suit do we hate? We hate king of diamonds.
Hate the queen of diamonds.
Yeah, the queen of diamonds checks, everything else bets.
Right, king of diamonds, we.
No idea.
Find the queen of, king of diamonds, but we hate having the queen of diamonds.
No idea.
I'm never gonna get that in game. Okay, cool. But we do triple barrel this.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Moving on.
I wish you'd given this. I actually wanted to take a break when he took a break.
Hello. This seems like a check, this seems like a check, give up.
Uh, I mean, I don't think we can check, give up. I think we can check call or bet. Even.
Okay.
I would bet.
Do it, bet small.
But I know we're supposed to check. See, I, I, this is where I, I make mistakes. I bet too much. I know we're supposed to check a lot, so it's probably a check, but I've been betting these. But I have it over and a backdoor straight draw, so I feel like I can bet.
So is this a better check raise then?
Your check, yeah, it's.
This is an all check.
So probably does want to check raise, right?
We'll go back and play it. Oh, you want, yeah, open it up.
If it's checking that much, there's definitely like fifty, at least fifteen percent check raises.
Sure. Deck raise probably small.
Probably a bit more. So. Check. And which their preferred bet size, but we'll just use their preferred sizing, which is small. And now we're of twenty, twenty-two percent. Check raises.
Right, and our particular hand, king ten.
Folds.
Yep, there you go. Does a lot of continuing on club diamond.
What, like, like our bluffs are structured oddly to me. You have to have backdoor flushes, I guess. Well, it's, yeah, pretty much. Straight draw, overcard, backdoor flush. Pair. And then over. With backdoor flushes.
Queen six?
No, that's just a, that's just a naked backdoor flush.
And a backdoor straight.
Oh, I thought it was on queen five. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, queen five, it doesn't, oh, the pair, the pair calls more.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think this is like. I would have thought these hands were slam dunks.
The ten queen is okay.
Not great.
Wraps.
Not great. And this would be like, to me, this is like an easy, like I would do this a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I would have bet this. I wonder if this one pure bet, I, I wonder if it's betting a lot on the flop.
You know what?
What's the suit dependency going on there? It's so extreme.
It's. So king, king ten and queen ten. Interact more with his bluffing range than king six and king four do. So I, we block his bluffs with king ten and queen ten.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, like a queen, like if he's value betting a jack, we can still get there with a queen. And this has straight draws. Like, that's why I just feel like this should be, like, that's why I think it would be fine.
But look at how highly suit dependent.
We're never betting it on the flop either. Right.
Like we don't like spades and hearts, the top two cards, and we love. Go back to the queen ten. There. And we love clubs and diamonds. And clubs and hearts.
Yeah, so you don't want to have the top, uh, card suit. Cause that is a lot of what they are gonna be barreling for flush draws the most, and then they'll barrel this the second most, and then that flush draw the third most. Apparently is how this. Solver breaks it down, I think.
So it likes having no card, no cards of the suit.
A club would be ideal.
We want him. We want, we want him to be betting his, uh.
Backdoor flush.
Backdoor flush draws. So we want.
Ideally.
Have a chance to have a black door flush draw that can fold.
And when he's betting a backdoor flush draw, it means he doesn't have a jack.
Right.
Right, I, is the, the kind of crazy extrapolation, right? Is that if he's betting those flush draws, he doesn't have the value from that card.
You've lost me. Which is okay, because this is, this is.
It's okay.
Well, he will have the jacks in his range as well, right? Um, but he'll have. I mean, he's just got, he gets to have more bluffs when he's, when we're not blocking the flush draws.
Yeah, so when, when, when we have the club and the diamond here, so, uh, we, we unblock him betting. His spades, and when he's betting his spades, he doesn't have a jack in his hand.
All right.
And so our hand becomes better because he. And so our hand becomes better because he has less top pair.
Of course, yeah, okay, gotcha.
I, in kind of a crazy way to think about. How we unblock his flushes, which block his, which, which. Changes the proportion of his value.
Yeah, 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 got it.
Right? In a way that you're never gonna think of at the table.
Oh, no, actually, I think the more we train, the more I am starting to pick up these level of thoughts, and this is why I love just continuously doing these training after months and months and months. I, this more and more of this kinda stuff creeps in, it's really good.
It's so, it's so crazy when you hear Justin Silbet talk about hands like that. Right, in his very calm and measured voice. Cause, yeah, it's just mind boggling, the stuff to think of.
He's not always calm and measured, he was my private coach for a year. Believe you me, he can get, uh, feisty.
Oh, I believe it.
Alright, so.
Never checks. We're supposed to dock this, wait, this has to be, his is slow, this can't be right, can it? So it's checks, okay, but we're docking that five.
And blasting. One sixty.
We're docking the five.
Yeah, I don't think I'll try that one. I mean, I do this with a big line, but that's sort of the guy, I noticed in position sometimes is somewhere to playing from the big line. It's got a lot of similar similarities to the way we play our range, I guess, since we have.
You mean out of position?
Were fives then, but maybe we get to do, but we don't have offsuit fives, like, it's not like a big thing.
No.
No, but his, his fives, like, he only has ace five and king five suited.
Does he even have king five suited?
Yeah, that'll be bottom of range for him, but like, we have other fives.
Not many.
And he raises, and he raises his ace five suited if he plays like us sometimes. Pre-flop.
Yeah.
Oh, this is our range on this street, so it's not gonna show them. Oh, but it should, I mean, we should, we don't have fives then, right?
Yeah, you gotta remember, he checked back the, the, the flop, so his range is capped.
Oh, wait, wait, we bet the flop, uh, never mind, we bet the flops, we're not docking.
Yeah, remember, we don't. Yeah.
This hand's over. I fucked this hand up. I do that a lot when I get sidetracked, just sidetracked and look at the current street, and I go back, I lose track of the action.
That's okay.
Make a mistake clicking. I'm gonna bet. You have the gutter eight, nine, uh, backdoor, I just think that button loves to bet, and we have, uh, a possibility to make a hand, so I, I have two evs to the seven. Uh, we can make straight with eight, nine, I think that's all it needs. I think it's all it needs. To bet small.
That's small. Yep. We have a lot of aces. More, we have a higher percentage of aces in our range than he does. Although he has better aces.
Yeah, and our Jack high is not worried about being outkicked by a better ace.
Yep.
So this is a nine high board, nine is the key card for us here.
So.
So I think there's gonna be some leads here.
I think we can check raise this one.
Do we bet large?
But if you wanna lead, we can, you wanna, you wanna lead sixty-five, if I lead, I wanna lead, lead thirty.
So if we had pocket jacks here, we would want to bet big for protection to prevent an overcard from coming. So our bluffs that are gonna have jacks and tens are also gonna wanna bet big. So I think this is gonna be a size up.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I about pot.
Let's do, oh.
Yeah, I think, uh, sixty-five or pot will both be okay here.
I'm on pot, I'm the tying vote, I'm gonna vote sixty-five.
Yeah. Sixty-five and pot.
Yeah, you guys had it.
Yeah, the heuristic is, the bluffs that we wanna have here are gonna match the value hands, and the bets are gonna match there too.
Gotcha. And why did you choose to, to look at the jack as opposed to the queen for that? Although the same argument made for the queen doesn't wanna see an ace and a king, but.
Queens need less protection, jacks and tens need more protection.
Right, no, I know that, but I mean, when we were looking at jack ten, what made you, jack queen, what made you focus on our jack rather than our queen? Since we blocked both, since we. We can rep, I, we, we rep each one of them equally with this bluff.
Um, yeah, a, and part of it is, we don't have tens, like, there's, there's a chance he has. A ten that's gonna interact with the board a little more. Right, when we have the ten in our hand, it's actually a better bluff for us, cause we block more of the continuation. Range with straights.
You could click word wrap LP.
Sure, but, uh, uh, what I meant was, you went in with your logic, you said. Uh, we have queen jack, we're bluffing it because we're representing, what do we wanna do with pocket jacks? And I'm just asking, why did you go to pocket jacks rather than pocket queens when you asked that question of yourself?
So queens would be more inclined to bet smaller.
Right.
A, and so, um, I, I, I just picked both, right, you could, you could, you could pick both. Right, and queens are gonna wanna size down a little more than jacks are gonna wanna size up, cause they need slightly more protection, cause there's one more overcard.
Yep, yep, yep.
And, and like. It, by that end, i- if you look at, if we had ten jack in our hand. There would be more pot bets and less sixty-five bets.
Yeah.
And as we move further up and away from that, we're gonna have more sixty-five and less pots.
Right.
Right, so I think. Queen jack is gonna sixty-five more, and, and ten jack is gonna pot.
Yeah.
So, but neither.
More equity on, much more equity on this board.
Yeah. But I, I gotta be honest, I don't, I don't think a lot of people are gonna float in game and call like this, so now, uh, when we get to the turn and we get a terrible card.
No, see, I think you're wrong, and that's why I thought people were gonna be afraid of this, and here's, here's why. Uh, we block ace jack, we block ace queen. Um, I do, he's gonna have ace four suited.
He's floating with every damn ace.
Huh?
How much of his range is an ace I here with a backdoor?
When we bet, when we bet pot, well, we didn't bet pot, we bet two thirds, but, yeah, I don't think the ace is particularly good for him, I think, uh, cause we block, like I said. We block his best ace hot, well, he doesn't even have ace jack and ace queen, right?
Tell me a hand that is in here. That you want a hold from with your queen jack.
What's this?
And king jacks.
It's like, there's just here, right?
So this is one of our, this sucks, could be one of our worst hands at this point, cause it can't improve.
This is the middle of our range, right, it's ahead of all of this gribberish.
No, but they have redraws, at this point in the hand. Uh, on this turn, this hand. Can't improve to beat an ace, it can't make a straight, it's kinda like a shit hand. Uh, and it's either you're gonna give up, or you're gonna try to win.
It's still the middle kind of our range, right, we have worse ones to do it with.
Yeah. But I think this is a, a give up, right, like, we would check if, we would be inclined to check if we had pocket jacks here.
I'm gonna bet.
This is our best queen eye kind of spot.
I'm betting small. I don't think the villain has a lot of aces left in this range. He's got a ace, I guess, aces up, he's got ace four, ace seven, ace nine, ace.
We're already ahead of all the backdoor flush draws that missed.
Yeah, but the problem is, you wouldn't, you wouldn't bet your ace like that on the flop. Like, you're not betting big.
I would bet ace nine like that.
Yes, you would bet ace nine, but you don't have that.
Well, that's why I sized down, I'm not betting big, I said I would bet small.
Well, we're betting on a bunch of ace eyes here.
We have ace, I have ace five, ace six, ace eight, ace three, ace two, they're all, the wheels are bent. Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna size down on the ace, I think we could bet this, but we don't wanna polarize, and we could bet small.
And one law, arguing to get Louis, when you're saying we're ahead of so much of his range, but we're not gonna get to the river against that range that we're again. Because he's, he's gonna be in a perfect position to bluff the river, if, if we check here. With his, with all that garbage that missed. And we're not gonna call him down, queen high.
Yeah, I agree. So what do we do?
I, I don't know, like. The other air hands, we have some kind of a straight draw that we bet on the flop, this one, we, we have nothing. I, I don't know what, what this hand does.
This is.
We have an equity shift, and that's good for bluffing.
I think we just pile small, to be honest, I think it's a small bet, it's a small bet, I think this part of the range, it's just like, if it, maybe it any folds, great, uh, if we get called, we're done. And maybe we hit a queen or jack, and it goes check, check on her, who knows?
So if he has, if he has a seven or a nine here, he's also not going to wanna bet when that ace hits too. Right, he's gonna take his marginal showdown hands to, to showdown here.
Well, do they start folding? He's gonna start folding sevens, we bet again. Nines are gonna start folding.
Uh, five's or pocket sixes fold?
Not gonna fold full frequency, but they're gonna start folding.
Six, seven, yeah.
Is.
No, cause the hand, the hand that we represented, like, betting tens or jacks here, wouldn't wanna barrel on this ace. Right?
Well, we have more than tens or jacks on the flop, that's not all, they're not the only two combos we bet, uh, that side.
No, but we would also have better, we would have better, great draws to continue with here.
Also, I mean, I think this is like absolutely one of our worst hands we're betting, and we're, we're here with right now, I think a lot of our other hands have better equity and would probably size up. The bluff, and I think this is gonna be a small bet bluff.
Okay, yeah.
I think they go on with like. Yeah, I mean, that's like.
Yeah, I can get behind a small bet.
I've got no idea. No, of course not. You know, I've came to understand, Mata Fleck once told me, whenever you don't know what to do in a spot, you should just check.
But the EV is, it's hardly losing any chips, right?
No, it doesn't matter, it's just a check, we're punting here, look at this.
Oh, it's not a punt, it's not a punt. We could just call now, like, this hand wasn't gonna win, this is a, again, game, like, I'm thinking, I can put a bet in, I'm gonna, I'm gonna win this.
Look, Ken.
I'm gonna win this a certain percentage of the time, just by putting out a small bet, and that's great every time they fold, this hand somehow wins. And if they raise or call, I'm giving up, I'm done, I took my shot.
Like, look at this here, you, this is where you wanna, you. This is the part of your range that you don't really have. You see, do you find this open?
Well, I'm not gonna bet queen five for pot on the flop. So I'm not gonna have that, my range. Like, we bet large on the flop, so I'm not gonna even have that, to be honest, I'm not finding that on the flop.
But that's, that goes back to the, we, when we have queen five, we don't block, we, we unblock him having queen jack and queen ten. Right, so that's why it's using queen five.
Yeah, also, like, queen five has kind of, uh. Nothing, right?
Go back to the flop.
We, we block the straight with queen five.
Go back to the root. Yeah, so like, you're gonna find queen five for, um, two thirds pot?
Um.
Well, I'm saying, like, I don't have this in my range, like, I'm just being honest.
Uh, I guess I will, because it's a nine eye board, and as we saw, we want to bluff. I, yeah.
So, yeah, it's a, it's a rainbow board too, so we have to find extra bluffs, cause we want to. Bluff range here.
Oh, yeah, I guess, I guess it's worth pointing out that we are betting this flop, um. Forty to forty-five percent more than most flops.
Yeah, and it's, it's all big betting too.
Yeah, so that's something I should really, uh. Recognize right away as well, I need to.
Yeah.
Like, this is a very unique flop for our position. Is this one of our highest C bet flops?
Yes.
Yeah, nine eye. Alright, so we fold. Seven, six, huh?
I lost a quarter chip.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine or equity, if you check here, he's gonna check it back.
Like, at first, okay, hold on, is population raising us with seven, six there? They're more likely, they're gonna fall before they raise. To be honest.
You're playing against pile right now, you're not.
I am, I am, I am, but I, I think some plays are good against, uh, it wasn't a terrible play versus pile, and I think that turns into a good play versus the people I'm playing against.
Against population, you're not gonna lead with an ace there very much?
I don't think.
Cause your ace is gonna show them.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead, Lee.
I don't think you should trust, trust your subjective experience. Like. That's a good way to lose money. Like, you should not trust yourself, Ken.
I heard you.
Yeah, like, ace king on, on nine, seven, four. Just has a lot of equity of getting to showdown or getting to the turn and, and realizing it with an ace or a king, so. I, I don't think you're gonna lead a lot of your aces there.
Yeah.
So, um. Yeah, like, when, when the ace turns, it's not that bad for him.
Check. So, definitely a checker.
Monotone board with an ace and a king and a Broadway? I don't know. Right, we wanna bet. Monotone boards, small and frequently?
Well, it's not true when it comes to these, it's true when it's like button versus big line. Right, but when it comes to these kind of range, this is not, I, I've found that. Most monotone flops don't play, like, it was blind versus button or blind versus scott off, for example.
Yeah, the caller's gonna be more oriented to having. Suited hands than the out of position player though, right?
Yeah.
So the caller's gonna have more flushes here.
But I don't know honestly, because. We have a gray, gray cup, that, I think, like, yeah.
Where's the charts?
He has a lot more, but when we do it. When we hit it, it's like, we're gonna beat him. Right?
But the in position player, because the ace and the king are on board, has dramatically less flushes, so I actually think this is a spot where out of position gets to bet. Because his flushes are blocked by the fact that. He has aces and kings. Here with his flushes.
I'll just share. I got the chart. Yeah, make it bigger.
This is monotone, this isn't monotone, this is the overview, oh, it is.
How many flops?
So this is in position.
Two hundred and eighty-four, two hundred and eighty-four flops.
Yeah, when the ace is on board, you do.
Uh, there's a button. When it's checked.
Yeah. Mostly check.
Uh, yeah, probably a bit over fifty percent. Fifty-five percent, maybe.
Got it, good.
Okay, so sixty percent bet, only betting small. On ace I monotone boards and king I monotone board. Okay, so ace and king.
This is button LP, this is when, when it's checked. Show us. And you wanna see, uh, the root?
Yes.
And I got it with bet sizes too. So there must be some raising for me to throw them in there.
This is not the root.
Says root.
Nope, it's check. Nope, it's check. Root check. So this is in position.
This is out of position. This is cutoff.
No, no, because the cutoff checks, right? Like that's.
Cutoffs checking ninety some percent, right?
We don't see it.
What do you mean you don't see it?
We only see the mono, the other one.
Oh, uh, let me go back and let me reshare.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. Very interesting.
And then um, I'm not sure what's in here, but we can look. If uh they bet, if they bet thirty, facing a small bet in position.
Meet them the after.
Overfold.
No, we don't.
Uh, yeah, we're overfolding.
We almost always meet them the after and we mostly, this is for monotone board, so we mostly. So.
You see the line he put in? This is the minimum defense, right?
Yeah, so we overfold.
Overfolding a bit.
Yeah, but usually it's a lot more than that.
Okay. We have a small raising frequency, not much. And then I don't think they ever have, they don't have big bets on the flop, do they?
Only, they only bet big when there's an ace on board.
So this is facing a sixty-five percent flop.
Show me again the, the small bet. Okay.
Done?
Yep.
Out of position is gonna have a really hard time here on monotone boards.
Alright, so I took some cool notes, something I shared them with you guys.
Now, on that, on on the particular hand we were looking at right there, this was the, our hand was.
Scott, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Yeah.
LP, hit format and word wrap. I can't look at it like this.
What?
And word rap.
Word what?
Word rap.
Rap.
Which one is it?
I I don't speak French.
It's not French, it's Spanish.
Hold on, I'll let you know. I'll open mine up and I'll let you know. It'll be either the top or bottom. Um, like, give me a second.
That's Fuente's font. That's not what you want. No, cancel this. It's not under font.
It's, I just gotta open a text file and read what it says and I'll be able to figure it out. So give me just a second here.
It fixed it. He just did it. It's adjusted de línea.
Got it. For format.
Done. It's done.
It's the top one, yeah. So that makes it a lot nicer, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, Scott.
I was just saying, now, on the, we were looking at, we're still looking at the monotone board, right?
Uh, we were.
Right, and our specific hand that we had here was the nine, seven suited. And I was just wondering, Ken, when we have nine, seven suited a hundred big blinds deep and we hit the nine on the turn, what do you think we do?
Oh, my God! Are you guys?
I promise, which today Wednesday, I swear to God.
What is going on here?
I I'm so glad I interrupted you now.
Okay, so I'm not comfortable with this sense. I'm gonna put it on somebody else. So may somebody, someone else answer here. What are we supposed to do?
Check.
Uh.
Check, give up.
Check, give up.
Some hands you don't win.
Well, it's bluffing.
Jesus, what a river. We are calling this river.
Easy call, right?
Oh, it's all, well, why don't you guys want to raise? Yeah, we got a raise for value here.
Jesus.
I told you this.
Never. Never, or thirty percent of the time, but wow, you raise her, I think that's absolutely savage. Honestly.
But we never hold it. We haven't called that.
Can he ever call, can he ever call without a flush?
Yeah, you just raised small here. You have, you have value.
Can he ever call without a flush?
No. Jesus, no, don't do it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's raising.
We are turning a straight into a bluff. That is what.
You're raising for value here.
We never get a spade to fold.
But we're not ra, we're not raising to make a spade fold. We're raising for value.
Again, against a, a two pair.
Against what? Ace, queen? His king, they say?
Yeah, lots of two pairs, lots of aces.
Yeah, but he's mixing.
Ace king's gonna rejam on us and we're gonna fold our straight.
Ace king is not gonna rejam. What? That guy's insane. Doesn't he know we have a flush?
He never thinks we have one. In his mind, it's impossible for us to just have a spade. Impossible. Why is that? What's going on with spades? They're, they're all raising, man. The dudes here. Come on, come on, we have some spades, bro.
Alright.
What is wrong with him? Queen nine, huh? No, no, it's all spades. King six, two pair.
Queen jack's gonna raise blood with a better straight. They're gonna jam, but it knows with a better straight.
Yeah, pretty weird.
That's gross.
I'm checking here.
So what's the heuristic when we turn the flush draw here? Do we lead small?
Uh, well, we have the ace high, so I'd probably check. I'd, I definitely would borrow some backdoor spades. I don't know if this one has to.
Uh, he has lied the, the uh table over a little bit and see what we're.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, you're supposed to lead.
Let's see.
When we, when we turn the, the card of the suit, we're supposed to lead small.
Yeah, I think it would do it with the ace, but it does.
Yep.
Just click the bottom spade because we have the uh offsuit.
That's what I really want to know. If it's a bad, what do we do with a bad spade?
Go back and click the um.
Yeah.
We can probe.
Is it probe, you think?
I, I think. I went check, check on the flop, so I get to probe, isn't it? Or delayed C bet? I don't know. It's like it's a probe.
But we don't yet know if it can be a s, a single small card of a suit.
Click the bottom spade and look at the offsuit. No, on the, okay, you do you.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So.
Yep, we can do it with the eight, we can do it with the eight, five and the six.
Yep.
That's it. Yep, that's all you need.
Yeah, but look at pocket fives here. It's not doing it.
Pocket five, but pocket fives are, 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 are already made. They don't have to bluff.
Yeah, pocket fives have a better showdown value.
Yeah, much better than ace five.
Yeah.
Seven reset, nines, nines are already a good hand. And sixes is barely doing it, so.
Yeah.
Isn't it those small pairs block villain from having ace five suited, ace four suited, ace three suited? So that's why they could probably call, right? Because they're not gonna run into those flushes. Box king five, ace five, king five suited, that box saves four, king four suited, ace three suited, ace two suited. Ace five, ace six suited, king six suited, blocks all those flushes from the villain when we have spade.
Hmm.
So they don't have to bet.
Alright. You think that's true?
I don't know.
What? The back of the flush won't overbet? Can it's also been that small with a single card of the suit? Wow, we already had it.
Oh, do we overbet though?
We overbet when we turn the backdoor flush. Is that right?
Yeah, is that, and that's what it's doing on this exact same?
Seems.
Well, yeah, yeah. Yep. Mostly that small, this one. It's pretty connected.
Okay, so no, we didn't turn a backdoor flush here. We turned a flush. But say we had hearts and it came a heart. And then look at this. Then look at this.
It's paying big a bit more than um, a little bit more.
Overbet with the back door. That's what we see here. So this was also true. Wow. Very nice. Alright.
I, I, I don't know. Do we get spicy here or just give up? I guess we just give up.
What do you mean? We're gonna make the flush.
I don't feel like we're getting the price.
Are we not?
We're not gonna get paid because we're gonna check. Uh, we're not gonna dock uh if we make a six eye flush.
What do you mean? We're gonna block that small for sure if we make the flush.
I'm following.
What's the value of the uh, the, the spade card we need to continue here? A ten of spade? Nine of spade?
I mean, a ten would be nice to make a straight. I think a ten. I would raise. I think I would raise if I had ace with the ten of spades. Or either one, ace of spades, ten X.
A big bet, you'd raise.
Yeah, I think I'd ship it actually. If I had a ace of spade, if I had ace X ten of spades, I think I would ship it.
Yeah, you'd go all in forty big blinds.
Yep.
Feels bad.
So ace of spades, ten of diamonds, Ken's shipping it?
No, ace of diamonds, ten of spades, he's shipping. Yeah, back off.
Oh, my goodness, I knew what it's called. We're gonna make the flush. Life was gonna.
And it's already raising that.
Raising the come.
Look at you, Ken. What are you doing?
Good to raise. It's too good to raise. Hey. But so quickly, queen ten, all right, queen ten's in there. Uh, now I get it. Ace ten's too good.
No.
Somehow queen ten isn't too good.
Exactly.
You can also. Queen ten is the, also is a straight draw to the nuts.
Ken.
It's not.
What does it say here?
Zero. So, so ace high is also gonna pick off all the bluffs that are gonna have to continue with the combo straight draw flush draw that doesn't get there on the river when the three of clubs comes.
Would you hover over the ace six offsuit again?
Oh, ace ten's not good enough. Queen ten's, yeah, queen ten is better, Scott. You're right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, well, queen nine's a gutter. It's similar to ace ten. It's so queen nine is, queen nine is blasting. That's one of the blast combos. It's got the gutter, one over and backdoor flush.
Never folds.
Look at queen nine off. That's the one. There it is. Queen of spades, gutter and over. Blast off.
Yeah, it's a high equity bluff that, that balances your nut flushes.
Right.
Still not only, it's not really blasting, it's hot, right?
And the ace ten. When, when the queen makes it, makes it straight, which the same as the ace can, it makes the nut straight and the ace doesn't.
We're raising sets big here now.
Yeah.
Some. Uh, it's not much of a thing raising, right?
It is with our hand.
Yeah, I mean, you mean the range.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanna go sixty-five here.
Okay, it's wet.
Sixty-five or bigger?
Uh, I mean, it might go bigger. It's the, it's our best, it's our best king. We don't have ace king, so I mean, I could go for pot, I guess.
Yeah, it's not gonna like any card that comes, so.
Nope, it goes big, but just not pot.
I'm greedy here.
And what's the EV mistake? It's probably not that much, right?
Chips.
Chips.
Yeah, okay, it's a mistake, but it's not huge. Now, does he call with his seven of spades? If he has seven, seven with a spade, does he call?
No.
Are you sure about that?
So the king's, the king's too high up. It does need protection. If we, if it was king, queen with, where the queen was on board, maybe it would be different. Or if we had queen jack.
I don't know. The king, queen, the king, queen needs the same pers, needs the same protection.
Yeah, because we, on the board. Because we hold the queen. That's why I said queen jack, right? Queen jack's gonna want more protection there.
Yes, yes.
Ken is never folding pocket jacks or.
I'll never fold sevens with a spade.
You'd be lucky if he doesn't raise you.
So jacks, tens and nines all need, uh, jacks, jacks and tens need uh spade to continue?
Yeah.
They're making folds heavily, mostly fold.
Even like that, and then look at, go to tens. Even more.
Seventy percent, yeah.
Need a spade and you, and you might as well fold.
Look at dirty queens. You need the queen of spade.
Yeah.
It raises the other ones.
Yeah, it's raising them as a, a bluff.
Uh, I don't know about that. It's good. I guess it is, yeah.
I, I think it, this is what Daniel Nigger knew would call a value bluff.
A value bluff.
Yep.
Why is it raising queens? I don't get that.
And not jacks.
Let's see strategy and uh react. Let's see strategy and, uh, react.
Trace folding for sure, it's turning it into a bluff.
Yeah.
But it wins.
Raise, re-raise.
Value bluff, it's the perfect value bluff, we finally found it.
It's raised, re-raising.
I'm gonna send this hand to Daniel Negroni.
Oh, you mean the, 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 the sliver of diamond club? It's its mind.
Is he talking about the line?
Yes, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, there's a, there's a rebuff with the, the non-spade. Non-backdoor hearts. Two queens.
Is it possible that's a, that's an unfinished solve artifact?
No, I don't think so, he runs them down pretty far.
Alright.
I mean, it could be, I guess.
It's an old one.
Yeah, I think we ignore that.
Alright.
Yeah, it's nice to know that when we get sticky with our queens and punt off a whole stack, that it was actually a real thing by then. Right? World, world class play to punt off with your queens there.
Till I untold myself and I do something I know is probably really bad and actually is really bad, and I go run the sovereign finance level, I'm like, okay.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Okay.
Did it half a percent of time?
I rolled a ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Uh, this is gross.
Check call, check call a small bet?
I just gotta check fold, to be honest.
No, I think, uh, I think Jonathan Little said that recently, king eye boards and this kind of spot are the best ones for us.
Yeah, we have some leads here, but I, I don't think we wanna lead with ace high.
He's lacking his best games. And he's lacking a lot of games, if you think about it. I would not be surprised if this was, uh, kind of a bad type of spot.
I'm checking falling.
Then let's see.
Yeah, we have lots of worse hands that we're gonna wanna lead here. Yeah, because out of position, we need, we need equity. So we're gonna wanna lead a lot of hearts. And hands that have interaction. With the six and the five, because those are below his, his flattening range.
Yeah.
So like our, yeah, like our ten eights, our ten sevens, our nine sevens, they're all gonna have some elements. So I think our ace jack is not a hand that gets lead here, because it has some showdown value.
So, uh, check, I, I'm curious how we defend with ace jack, I, I mean, I, I would fold if you bet even small, to be honest.
We're, we're gonna find out in a second.
Well, now we checked back, I wanna see what. Yeah.
Fool.
Starting to fold.
Lot of calling.
Nothing calls.
Ace, jack offsuit, which, which is what we have.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's losing money.
Yep.
Well, barely making money. Barely making money.
It's got some raises with the hearts.
It's breaking even.
It's definitely starting to fold, though.
And it mostly folds when it has no back, when, when there's no. Oh, hold on. It mostly folds when it has the ace of spades. So it's that same thing that the ace of spade, that, uh, we block him from his backdoor spades.
Yeah.
Alright.
So. He's gonna have some, uh, eights in his range here?
Go, Louis, go back to that, go back to the, the, what we were looking at here on the flop, I just wanna go over a couple of the other offsuit ones, like the king, I, so we have this thing, the heuristic, and I think I can get this. We, we fold the most when we have the ace of spades on our ace nine eight when we're folding, right? The ace not, the ace of spades is that, I wanna see if that's true across the king and some of those. So, uh, give us, give us the, uh, give, give us, give us our high card as a spade.
The top, the top spade and the, um, clicker over there on the right.
Yeah, click the. Although that.
Yeah, the top one.
The top one, the big card spade and the small card, small card off.
Okay.
Except that. And then we, yeah, if you, I guess we flip between the two of those, flip between spade and off and just see if that's what it is. The spade folds more on the aces and the queens.
Yeah, so the difference, I see, look, it's not. It's gonna be here, look at this area here, spades. It's kind of playing, hearts, it's always playing and.
Hearts is always playing, but this.
So.
That's the suited, that's, that's.
What I know, what I'm saying is, when it's a, when it's a high, low, when it's a high card and then low connected cards, we abandon the top of range backdoors and defend with the shit that wraps around the bottom parts.
But there's one, there's one other interaction here that I think that I, that I think we can get, and somebody, if they don't, aren't convinced by that, and that is when you're looking at just our high card hands. And you're deciding which ones to fold, we don't want to have the ace of spades, we don't want to have the queen of spades. We would rather have the ace of diamonds, I mean, obviously, we want the ace of hearts, that's easy. We want a backdoor heart, but if we can't have a backdoor heart, we specifically don't want to have a single spade in our hand.
Yeah, we don't wanna have the.
Look at ace jack here, I think you're right, because ace jack with the spade folds more than when it doesn't have a spade.
You don't wanna have the top.
I think we can.
The top. Card on the board.
I don't even think it has to be the top card, Ken, I think it, we'll just, I mean, we'll see this on another flop. I think it's, we want to unblock his backdoor bluffs.
I think it is top cards, if you see if it's a rainbow flop, you often don't wanna have the same, the top card.
Okay. The one with the spade is folding the most.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I, that's what I think is, I think this is gonna be consistent, and I think I can get this.
Amazing.
Yeah, the, the, whether you want the top card or the bottom card in the rainbow flops is way too weedy for me right now.
And look here, if you look at the queen of spade, the call is no, the least profitable.
Yeah, and it's the one that never raises, also.
Yeah.
Because when. The weakest thing, it still hurts your hand, it hurts your hand to have a single spade in it. It helps your hand to have a single heart.
Yeah. Very nice.
And diamonds and clubs are neutral, spade is worse than diamonds and clubs.
Yeah, because when he picks up a spade, he's supposed to bet big with his bluffs. Right, so.
Yep, that, he can.
Yeah, so then we get to call off his massive whale bets with a pair.
Make it two-tone flat. So, more clear.
Yeah, that's. And I'm gonna guess that the bigger your card is, the worse for this, but I don't think that's important.
I would say two-tone word rather than flush. Draw boards, I mean, that's more clear, I think.
Maybe for you, for me, a flush draw board is this.
I mean, some people could read it, oh yeah, it's your notes, it's fine. Some people might think monotone flops are flush draw board as well.
I wanna be playing against those people.
Well, technically, it is a flush draw board, right?
Oh.
Technically quads are trips. There's just two of them.
Oh, it means we can call more often with ace jack and call less often with a spade in our hand, very interesting heuristic. When you're looking down at your calls, I think it's.
So do we wanna start bluffing when the flush is brick on the turn, then? I mean, I don't, I wouldn't bluff this hand, but I wonder if that's, uh, do we wanna peel to start bluffing?
No.
Yeah, cuz we unblock his spades, which check the flop to try and realize their equity, but I think ace jack is just good enough to showdown.
Well, not right, I said ace jack, I knew wouldn't, cuz it's too good, but I mean, do we start bluffing with our other hands that when it bricks, our other club combos, like, uh, we add a nine of clubs, I don't know, ten, nine of clubs.
Nine of clubs is a real draw, though, go, go with the queen, go with queen ten, they can't get anywhere.
Uh, jack seven, clubs. That's a draw too.
Yeah, queen ten.
Nah, just the front doors.
And. And the spades.
Yeah, the queen ten of clubs has a tiny micro amount of bluffs as opposed to the queen ten of diamonds.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, welcome back, James.
Sorry, I missed earlier, I just, uh, had to work this morning.
He saved your hand history for when you could be here.
Yeah.
You wanna switch to that?
Sure.
Let's finish this hand.
No.
No, we're not.
No, let's continue.
Okay.
I wanna start off, uh, something, something, at this time, it's been three hours now.
Okay.
Can go on, actually, I, I don't mind training until we die, I mean.
Okay.
But I don't wanna start a new hand history, because I'm kind of deep focused here.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a good spot, right?
Let's take, let's check and, let's check and go to showdown with ace jack.
Sounds like a plan.
Well, apparently he had other ideas.
You know what?
Good bluff catch.
Yeah.
You raise?
No, we call. Oh, no.
Oh, he had everything.
Yeah.
Gotta call, you gotta call.
Yeah.
You don't block his blush.
Yeah.
I would fold spades, I would fold diamonds. Do we call with, uh, do we call with the spades? I mean.
I mean, look at, we perfectly unblocked it, but he had a flush draw, we were right to call.
Yep.
Queen ten, let me see, let me see, queen ten, is that raised bluffing? Probably not. It's just never gonna get out of line there. That just folds.
What's our bluff, what's our bluff, what's our bluff raise? To ace deuce is our bluff raise. Ace four.
Ace ten.
These are the hands we wanna call against the bet. So, having a heart in your hand, wow, look at this, that's shocking.
Yeah, you want him to, you want him to be blocking hearts here.
This is our calling range against.
This is weird, look at us, oh, right, no, but look at us, look at us, we're, we're calling with the ace, with the heart, more than we're calling.
That's terrifying, I don't.
That's, that's the reverse of everything, we, that's the reverse of.
Yeah, but look at this, here it's the other way around, ace of heart is folding, all the other ones are calling, but it's calling more with the jack of hearts. And but ace queen here is just terrible, it's calling more when it has the heart. And.
Why is it raising some of them, like?
So ace nine, I mean, what is wrong with ace nine here?
This is getting, uh, whackadoo. And nine blocks the, uh, nut straight, so that makes sense.
Nine, seven, but the ten. See, I'll, I'll, look at ace ten, when you have a heart in your hand, the equity is bad for you.
Yeah. Wait a minute. Yeah, you, you don't want a heart in your hand.
But the, still, the best one to have, I think what we see is the clubs, right?
But it's weird, look at the diamonds, look at the diamond spade. Diamond spade calls less often than, than heart spade did. And heart spade blocks one of his bluff, I guess maybe he makes that bluff earlier? He doesn't bluff hearts on the river.
Ah.
He.
He blasts for sure with every heart. But thinking man, he might size up here.
Well, his only hearts are queen jack, the only hearts he has that aren't, is like queen jack, that's it, all the other hearts are something.
Jack, queen ten.
Go square proportional to rate, to weight, maybe he's, maybe it's these, bluffed them off already.
You gotta make a vague one story, this is crazy stuff.
Alright, and then. Let's just look at this and compare it to this. Hmm. I don't get it, here, clubs are for, folding more than hearts. No, that's not right.
On the jack. Clubs, clubs are calling more than hearts on the jack, and that's what we, and that makes sense.
I guess look at the ace ten and ace jack. On hearts.
Ace ten and ace jack call more than ace queen.
Now let's look at the EV for the six off. When we have a heart in our hand, make as much as when we don't, right?
Yeah.
It's not fair.
I mean, maybe what it is, th- this makes some sense, he has a reason to bluff his hearts on the flop and on the turn. On the river, it's irrelevant to him. And a matter of fact, if he plays like we do, he bluffs his hearts less often on the river. He bluffs the front door flush less often than everything else, because he wants us to have it. So maybe it's a blocker of a, of a reverse blocker. Which is not a thing, but you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Too weedy.
Hmm.
Bet.
Double belly buster on an ace high board?
Yeah.
Do we wanna get, do we wanna get check raised here?
No, it would be terrible.
Yeah, so I think we wanna realize our equity, cuz the hand's too good, we have the two overs in the second, yeah.
Then we can bet with hearts, we can bet with spades. Checking is okay, or betting big.
I think it's okay, yeah, I guess because when we get check raised, we can call with a double belly buster.
Button, don't check draws, man. It's just bad.
Yeah, but half the time it's checking, it's. You can't misplay the button on this flop.
This one's too good. A draw, like if it's a gut shot, you wanna bet, but.
But it's still, it still is betting this one.
Yeah, like if you have, uh, if you have queen nine here, it's a better bet than queen jack.
Alright, let's see if that's true, let's see if it bets queen nine more often. Queen nine checks fifty-eight percent of the time.
Queen jack.
No. Queen nine here checks around.
Oh, this is the whole range up there, I'm sorry.
Around third, mid twenty-five percent of the time, twenty percent maybe.
Yep, and queen jack checks half the time.
Yeah, so.
You're right.
So queen nine's a better bluff than queen jack. Because queen jack is better.
But why not, like?
And same with jack nine, jack nine bets, jack nine checks more.
Jack nine checks the most. Right? And then those kings. And then those kings don't block the interaction with the board, so they're, they're happy to get better kings and stuff to fold.
Yeah.
Like they're bottom of range. They're happy to get Ace four to fold when you bet with King four.
Mm-hmm. And all the small, small pair bluffs are bluffing cuz they're small pairs. They're not gonna get any better and can they win right now?
Yeah.
Sixes and sevens can become straights. They still beat fives, fours, threes and twos.
And nines and jacks and queens just wanna get to showdown.
Yep.
Right with a marginal made hand.
Yep.
Right, and now I wanna see, the board was Ace, King, Queen with a flush draw, something like this. Or just Ace, King, five. Let's see how we play with pocket deuser. Is it the same pattern? Seems to be.
Yep. Oh, so sixes and sevens don't, don't care very much about the straight. That's not what they were. They just, they're just better.
Yeah.
They just beat, they beat the five.
Yeah.
Is the important thing.
And then, so three broadway. Ace, King, Queen, let's see if it's still true.
Now, 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 sixes and sevens are basically deuces and threes. They're real, they're similar. A little bit less, but.
And then what about Ace, King, Queen without the flush draw?
We don't have it.
I got it.
Ace, King, Queen?
I got, I got rainbow flo- or, uh, rainbow flops.
Show me.
What do you wanna say?
After a check.
Ace, King, Rainbow, exactly the board you opened. Check the board, check for out of position. In position can bet small pairs even on rainbow boards. Show me Ace, King, ten. And Ace, King, five, Rainbow. Show me Queen, ten, five. Show me Jack, ten. Jack, ten, six. Show me Ace, seven, seven. Ace, and Ace, seven, five. Ace, seven, Ace, nine, six. Show me pocket four.
Sorry, what?
Pocket four.
Oh, good. Suits don't matter.
Yeah, alright.
I like it when suits don't matter.
Yeah, particularly against rainbow flops, right?
Yeah, just when, when suit, yeah.
Let me show you something. I think, I think this will be a hand where it might be, uh, a thing. So we have, so we checked, they bet small. I think like, if we have like pocket fours or fives, I think they'll call with a diamond or heart. Of course, they have to have both, two, two of the three. I do believe. I hear it's calling them all. Not sure why. Do you like ace? Maybe it was from an early, maybe it's an earlier position spot I was looking at. Orange and diamonds probably the best, right?
Yeah, just wants to block the backboard flushes of any type, right? Did, it doesn't wanna have the club one.
I think that's probably, and this might be more of a thing for like, um, hijack versus button, actually. I'm not sure.
Probably.
I'm not sure cuz I'm kinda looking at these button spots versus hijack. And cutoff, uh, so it might be a little bit, bit more of a thing from the hijacking. Might have it mixed up at this point. Because like there, it was just calling all the pairs. What I remember, which spots I was looking at, where it was folding, like if it checked and button bet, it was folding under pairs unless it had at least two of the suit, like both cards had a match suit on the board. Or, a- and, and some of them weren't even like really making money when they call, honestly. So it might be a hijack, I'm not sure. So what made me even like start wanting to look at this pause? I looked at one of my old webinars. From last July, when he was reviewing his hard, and he was talking about his float flop bets. And, um, he was like forty percent or something, and he wasn't happy. He said it should be like at least fifty percent or fifty, like even like fifty-five percent from the button. And I, I'm only betting, I was only betting when it was checked to me on the button like twenty-seven percent. So like, I'm just leaving so many chips on the table right now.
What about here?
Uh, we, what do we do? Bet small on the turn and got called?
Yeah. Well, we check.
Yeah, we checked to not get blown off our equity.
I, I would probably start, I mean, I don't think we can get a ten to fold now, or maybe not even an eight. I, I think the solver's gonna bet, I would check.
Most of the check.
And when we bet, we bet big.
And that's exactly why, cuz it's hard to get, uh, smaller pairs to start folding, so I guess that's probably why we have to size up.
Yep. And now we have to fold to this small bet, right? We're not gonna call Queen high. And we're not gonna raise.
I get to just bluff his ass off here, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just gave it to him.
Over that. He gets to do that, and with a small bet, he gets away with that. That's what's, I mean, small bets are nice. What's that?
We're winning against the solver right now. I'm not, we're gonna let you screw it up for us.
You know what I like to look at is the hand, uh, total errors per hand. It'd be great if we get it, like I write down my goals to get it under two, but I'd like to get it under one at some point.
Look at this, we are under two.
Yeah, we're losing one and a half chips a hand, right?
No, we're winning.
About, uh, error wise.
We are winning two hundred dollars against the solver. I think it's time to sit out. We made it one hundred dollars. I don't think we can get a lot more.
It's the, it's the Friday night, uh, six thirty in the evening hit and run.
Yeah. Oh, and it's over one hundred twenty-three yen, so it's over. I guess we can continue.
I keep going. I'm ready to give up.
Hold on now.
So. Aren't these are hot, like even though we check a super high frequency, it, do we bet more on paired flops or does it not really change the, um, to, to check frequencies?
When it came to pair flops, we had an heuristic here that said, uh, pair board on low pair boards, eight, eight and less, uh, like, that's pretty good for us, I think. But the high ones think are very bad for us.
For Chuck.
And this is a high one. But we have the backdoor flush, so I would venture into betting here a little bit.
I'd like, probably not a mistake.
I'd like to bet here.
On, on this one, though, do we, the nine is also a key card for us?
Oh, bingo, yeah. Forget about the nine here.
So because like, when we talk about the, the higher card, the higher side card being the value, because the nine is the key card, um, this is one of the rare ones where we're gonna wanna bet a lower value card. But, um, yeah, I don't know, like Ace deuce suited, um, we have some value here too. Uh, yeah, I think we would have, I, I think we would have had a very easy call if he'd have bet small. But I think we have a tough call here against the raise. Like, I don't know if I wanna call here.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got, he gets to raise queens as well. Like, it's sick, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna peel one, just cuz I know the solver's balanced.
I'm gonna fold now.
And I know he's got queens, and he's gonna have a lot of nines though, too. Like, he's raising all his nines, all his queens, a bunch of draws. So, I mean, our ace can, uh, beat, can core the nine X. He's got some, some of his nine X. We have backdoor heart, so I mean, I think I'm gonna call.
I would probably fold here.
It's about to go.
Bad call.
I folded.
Uh, I was with you, Scott.
Good.
So you need front door, uh, flush draw to call. Ace two with spades, that definitely call, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, look at this.
Back eye on this too.
This is a different scenario. This is cutoff versus big line.
Oh, okay.
And it seems like the nine is still a key card here. It's the exact gap between the, what's good and bad. Very interesting. So both in this scenario, and if we were heads up against the big line, the nine is really good for the cutoff.
Check fold. Hope for check, check.
Oh, we were getting cooler.
Oh, 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 no. There's no way we can raise, right? At the same time, calling feels bad. How are we gonna get paid if we just call?
So.
Raising seems like he's never gonna continue often enough.
I actually have, I think, I think I have charge for trip flops too. I think it's just a call. I think I actually have this.
See if you have.
Looking. I have it for some spots. I do.
I would raise here, but it's savage and all. We cannot raise. This is weak and strong. We need to go.
I have it, but I didn't send him the report for the, uh, charge yet.
But look at the raising frequency. That's all I wanna know. Are we raising?
Yeah, just all because protecting your hand is not a thing.
I'm, I'm raising because I, I think we want to prevent a bad overcard coming.
Twenty percent raise mostly defined by calling away. Yeah, look at this. We're raising with hands that.
Yeah, like sevens are gonna raise, like fives, but sevens and then eights, then nines, the, the higher up our pair is, the less we're gonna raise, but I think sevens still need some protection.
Yep, but majority of the time still.
When was the last time you raised that king four?
So on trip flops, here, let me show you the screen.
Hold on, go back to the king four.
This is like, we're gonna go back there. That was savage, right? King four, king five. Okay, so you don't have many, but the average.
Well, it's trips. It's all, it's trips.
It's all the trips. That's all the trips there are.
Yeah, but I don't want that. I want, uh.
But look, he doesn't really bet often. Like, he bets the nine the most.
Of the nine. Most quads.
And ace is the second most, then all the rest are, uh, sixty-five percent.
In position strategy. This is for out of position.
What's the blank line? Oh, the blank line is the average cuz of the way you, you sorted it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I just don't know what I'm doing with this yet.
You need to give me the imposition report. This one is not the good one. It's part of cutoff.
Gotta close this. I don't know why I did that. Bring it up a little bit. You know. And what do you wanna say?
I wanna see the average.
I don't have the average. I could give it to you, pivot. Average what? Check back or bet?
I want to see the average betting.
So. It mixes heavily between, uh.
Can you share the good screen?
I am sharing my screen, aren't I?
No, you're sharing the window. The bad one. Alright, what's the average? The average is fifty-five percent, so we're mostly betting on trip boards.
See, it mixes hard, like it's got a lot of big bets too. You got what you need?
Hang on.
I gotta make some uh rolls.
That's interesting. No big bets on kings, queens, jacks, tens. And mostly big bets on aces.
No big bets on aces.
So, yeah, he never bet small when the board is like a low uh low trip board. But the higher the trip board gets, the more he gets to bet small and never bets big. Then the lower the the trip boards get, the more he polarizes and uses big size.
Yeah, I mean, these would be gone if we ran it down a bit more. They would probably just go right to sixty five or check. I'm not really sure of it's um involvement. So, yeah, like king, so Broadway never bets big. Right? Ace, queen, jack, ten, kings, never betting sixty five ever. Sorry, do they?
Whoa, I never. That's a pretty cool heuristic for this spot. So on trip boards in position, bet smaller checks fifty percent of the time when it's a high trip board. On actually, I'm gonna rephrase.
This is button.
This is the button.
Right, LP, this is the button to check again, might check.
Exactly. Well, the gasp is what? The nine?
Yeah, and the nine almost always wants to bet small because it has such a nut advantage and the eights as well. And then it starts to get bigger as the size goes down. From the eights and nine.
Okay, that's nice. Very nice. Not a realistic phone. Trip boards.
All that stuff I was wasting my time on.
Yeah, we finally see that we was not a waste of time. We have a clear picture now.
Before you jump off.
I have lots of notes.
Yeah, before you jump off this particular board, let's uh let's look at if if we open it up in the. After we finish the hand, we open it up. I wanted to look at the equity graph on it. On the flop, but moving on, the jet we bet. Oh, he bet and we call. Now he checks.
Oh, wow. Poor actor.
Right, so. Out of position, out of position has. Has the has the range advantage and slightly, but a huge nut advantage. And the way you can see that is right at our best hands. So the overall dis- difference between the graphs is your range advantage just across the board. So out of position, which uh the cutoff has more nine, so they have they have the range advantage.
Yeah, we don't have button. But it's small. Vixes, jacks and queens doesn't ever have kings or aces.
Right, but. But out of position. Yeah, right, exactly. It's at the top of the range, at the top of the range.
Now, show me again the first report, Kim. Uh that was for root. It's out of position betting these spots. What's the average? He's checking seventy percent of the time.
Yes, I mean, he mostly checks.
When he bets, he only bets big.
Well, he's got some, but um.
Yeah, just ace, king and nine.
Nine high, six high. Seven high, so eight. But yeah, I mean, it's mostly he's mostly checking, right? Like. Seventy percent check. So he does bet trip flop slightly more that like I think actually, you know, when you have.
Only use the big size. He only used the big size when he bets. Never that small.
Right, well, e- except against aces and nines, right? Like, the nine is that magic card for him, so.
Right, sorry, it needs.
Aces and nines and a little bit of kings.
Yeah.
Are the ones that he gets to range bet.
Right, so we can guess that the king and the nine are so pretty good for him.
But the nines actually still do bet way more larger. Uh I mean, the aces are the only the aces are the only hand where it actually bets small more than large. All the rest prefers large or small.
Is the king a key card?
Is the king a key card?
Yeah, for out of position.
I didn't have him uh do the charge for this yet.
Yeah.
It is because you open more suited kings than he defends suited kings because he has some three bets with his kings.
Yeah.
And we still have pocket kings and ace king and he doesn't. So we have a broader coverage of kings than he does.
And he's folding king deuce, king three, king. We're we're playing king, probably king three, king four, king five, king six, and he's folding a lot of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then he's three betting like the king ten or king nine, so he doesn't have that. And then he doesn't have ace, king or pocket kings, so. That's why king is a good card for us, too.
And we're opening king ten and he's not defending it offsuit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of kings that he doesn't have.
Yeah.
We being.
Yeah, Jonathan Little alluded to that a little while ago that. Uh in these type of situations, king boards and paired king boards are the ones we get to lead on the most.
Right.
Never bet small on a ten, a jack, a queen. And for some reason, a five, six.
Eight. Um. Five, six, seven, eight. No, look, you you can just do it that way.
Yeah.
And deuces, threes, fours. Yeah, they're they're all zeros. You never bet small on. You never really bets. You can if you take the two and eight out, you never bet small on anything except for kings, aces and nines.
Right, right.
These aces and nines are the only things that you bet small ever. And just just take the, you know, take the three percent. I mean, take the uh the two point six four.
I mean, a low flops, I guess, is just way more than has. They have to defend so many. The lower the flop, I guess, the more they gotta try to defend versus a bet. So we can get extract a lot of value with our made hands, I guess. I don't know.
The lower the flop, the more likely they are to bet big with their over part over pairs that are still under our over pairs. So we get to cooler their pocket sevens, which have to bet big. Like on that flop that was six, 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 pocket sevens and fives and threes want the most protection. And so we get to cooler them with our bigger over pairs.
So something just did dawn on me. I did look at this spot once and I remember um I feel like. Our betting uh range is over pairs and all the backdoor flush draws because it's a uh three, it's a. Basically, a um. Uh rainbow flop, right? So you bet all your pairs and all your backdoor flushes.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that's how it's gonna be when we look at it in the um. Not all your backdoor flushes, but that's where you pull all your bust from is backdoor flushes. If they wrap around that pair, obviously, it's better. Or the trips. Trip ups around the trips.
All right, guys, I gotta go. Until next time, see ya.
My better.
Thanks a lot, man. Stay good.
Yeah, bye.
That we call, he checks.
You bet.
So so hold on. If he did he lead into us on the flop?
Yep, he led into us.
So what does he lead small with? He's gonna lead small with his like thinking of this, like he's supposed to be betting when he leads, he's supposed to be betting big most of the time. So he's gonna be leading small with uh.
He's never supposed to lead small.
Yeah.
On a six five on trip sixes, according to the.
Well, he didn't solve LP only solved his down to uh fifty percent. So there's gonna be some like if so like if in his solutions, if there's a point. One percent uh that I don't have any longer, the solver will find it in these training sessions to bet.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, like this is gonna be like it like this is gonna be slightly different than what I.
It's gonna be something. Yeah.
I mean, as far as learning purposes, it's the same, but when we get into the solver.
Right.
It will bet any my minutia it can find if it so chooses.
Right, click on it on its bet thirty, just so we see, just so we see what it is. Oh, it's doing it all over the place in this. Weird.
Well, it breaks it down. Yeah, like it's betting thirty.
Yeah.
Seven whatever net, but it spreads it over shit.
Point forty six, not too bad.
Yeah.
Like, if you ran it down, this bet pot would probably be gone.
Yeah, I think this would be gone and I think uh we probably mostly use this one or checks.
Probably. It probably starts charging more.
But the bet thirty should also but but the bet thirty should also disappear, right? Didn't we find that there were?
Yeah, a little bit. Should not inherit and inherit a little bit.
Yeah, it would be down to thirty percent and and seventy, sixty eight percent, then two percent bet small, right? Like, it's gonna have a tiny bit, but.
On six six?
Yeah, so.
In the other one in uh. I thought that in uh.
So I can pull up this exact hand. Let me pull by exact hand and see what the difference is. We could just kind of just start speculating. I could pull up this exact hand and see.
Yeah.
I'll 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 further yours is gonna be point thirty five.
Oh, you know, in a second. So I solved down to twenty, under twenty five percent. And uh there is zero bet thirty and zero pots.
Yeah, so it's all bets six, five or check.
Share.
Yeah, that's interesting how quick that diff up.
Yeah, we'll take your word for it.
Yeah.
Oh, point zero one.
Well, that's I only went down to point two five. If I went down further, that's gone.
Yeah, perfect.
And I only ran it by a point two five because he's this was only thirteen flops, whatever, and it was only gonna take me an hour anyway. So I said, ah, let's just run it way down.
Yeah, so. I guess was right.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it's weird that he he led into us here for that he led small on that flop.
Yep.
Well, like again, in his LP has it doing it six percent of the time. So the trainer will find it six or six or seven percent of the time, whatever it is. But we know it's not a thing.
Yeah, so I think against a large bets, we probably have a marginal made hand that's a decent bluff catcher here. So I think we probably are just calling.
Also, I have one more sizing here. I wonder if it changed anything. You also, your sin doesn't have the all in.
Yeah, the all in is it has the all in. It just doesn't didn't use it.
Yeah, does it? It didn't show.
Let me see. I had it in I had it in the uh script for sure. Where my uh? Sixes. So.
I wanna bet the I wanna bet these sevens on the turn.
See the setup? If it wanted, if it needed to use all in, it was available. So all it'll appear, I guess, on the turn. But it was I selected it for the flop, but since like if you type in A in bed sizes, it will show it there and it's just gonna be zero if it doesn't use it. If you click the add all in box, it will only show it if it needs to use it. I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I had it there. It was available for the solver to use. It chose not to.
Okay. So it doesn't even come up in the solution.
Yeah.
I I wanna bet this one forty eight or one oh four.
It didn't need to use it. It's not a thing.
Reality, I wanna bet it. Half of between the two.
Forty eight.
Yeah, I think I wanna pot control here and I don't want to to load a pot with a marginal made hand here.
Yep, but do you wanna spend forty eight to protect yourself against uh three tens and three aces?
I think I wanna bluff catch him when he wants to blast off on the river.
Ooh, better. That's really good, too.
Right? Like, when we bet, we're gonna get called by better or raised by better, but when we check, we allow him to blast. Because he's like, sometimes he's just gonna bet hot, right? Or or three X pot. I think we have a reasonable bluff catcher there with sevens.
Yep. Higher variance, more money. I gotta get better at that.
So we bet bigger?
I would check.
Check raise?
Sure. Yeah, we wanna check raise our top pairs.
Now.
We're good by size. So raise big or raise small?
I'm calling.
No, we're gonna rate. Uh I'm gonna raise big.
Black, we black hearts, we block spades, we block uh Broadway plus draws with the jack. So like, we're either way ahead or way behind. So I just gonna call.
Yeah, he doesn't have ace, king and range. I'm gonna brace.
When we when we raise, though, we raise small because because he bet, because he bet big.
Yeah.
So it so our raise is big enough.
Yeah.
But we called, which is a thing also.
Yeah, both are okay.
Check.
Yeah.
Yeah, he used the bigger size before, so.
Uh so now the pot's what? Three, seven, three eighty? We could probably just blast it. Maybe just check jam here.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't have ace, king and range, so he's either got two pair or we have him beat. Right? He's gonna like the board's not gonna have a ton of draws that are great, so.
He's gonna have set sometimes. He's gonna have ace, queen sometimes, or have ace nine sometimes, whatever. But I mean, I think we just gotta, we have, like you said, we have one of our best hands here, so.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Yeah, we're gonna lose to ace, queen and queen nine, and we're gonna scoop everything else and we have outs against those hands.
Yeah.
Show us the money.
Why are you running reports for us? I should just give you all mine. I have this whole spot solved for every spot.
Raise it up.
Uh can you tell me? The frequencies against the big bet?
I'm jamming here.
That's not what I'm asking.
Uh frequencies what? That we out out.
Facing facing a a big bet, do we ever raise? Facing, facing a big bet, do we ever raise, we always raise small?
And now this has to be, I think, uh.
I don't wanna know what to think. I wanna know what the report says.
Oh, my report.
Versus big bet.
I don't think I have, I'll look.
That's what I'm making it. You know, look at it and I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I could run it.
I'm doing it.
I might have it cut off.
Wanna rip air or call?
Hold on, button, what are we? Rainbow? I'm ripping it.
Oh, yeah, like the nine of spades.
One thing can, he has deuces.
Which it.
Biggest punt of the day can.
It was just a call, yeah. We were still gonna lose, we were still gonna lose everything, but we were gonna lose it in a, in a better order.
In a better EV fashion.
Yeah.
Better.
Yeah, we're, yeah. We're going broke, right?
Yeah, we're going broke.
We're folding here? We're calling?
Um, I'm calling.
Well. Um, he's not supposed to lead very often. He's supposed to mostly check. He's using a bigger size. He's representing queens and his bluffs are gonna come from queens here. We're blocking the straight pretty hard.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the sevens are, sevens are better called than nines.
Yeah, so I think I'm gonna fold.
Oh, no.
Weird. I didn't think you would.
So we had two, one of my, one of my beliefs is that we have two of the suit, which makes it harder for us to fold. We have two of the suits, two of the three suits in our hand. So maybe it will appear in this one, show the nines. And I guess.
I call it less than nines, but eight are more than nines.
So the nines, the best calls are gonna block what's on the board, a diamond heart. So you have diamond in a heart or a heart and spade or a spade and a diamond, right? So clubs are the worst to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so good fold with the nines. What's his, uh, what's his betting big range there? Do we, if you can take a look at that? His betting big range is oh, so he's turning threes and twos into a big bad bluff there. Okay. I don't feel too bad because I don't think population's gonna find that.
Yeah, right?
Right? So I'm, I'm okay with losing to twos in that situation.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, I was about to show you. I have that exact hand where the opponent had twos from the other night.
Oh.
But it hasn't, it hasn't downloaded it yet. I'll show it to you. I'll get it tomorrow.
What do we do here?
Marginal made hand. We mostly defend with second and third pair by calling. But it's not gonna be great with the ace.
I would check fold.
I think you have to check call once.
Yeah.
Oh. Now we don't, we don't have a heart here, right? So our hearts would want to bet, but we do get to bet small with our pairs.
We're checking a lot of aces on the flop, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think.
Hundred percent check?
Yep.
Wow.
I hate checking to the position. I know it's supposed to bluff a lot. And I, and when I have a hand, it doesn't really wanna call bluff. We'd rather just start betting. I, it's bad, I get it, but like.
Yeah, I feel the same way, Ken. You make, you make more money by check calling there and it's less, and your life is so much less happy.
Mm-hmm.
And you just gotta learn to do it, but yeah.
You can just call.
Sure.
Now we bet.
Small, wanna keep.
I don't know what size, honestly. I guess jack, eight probably wanna go, is probably gonna wanna go small.
Small, yeah.
Better jack might size up. Checks, wow.
Yeah, the marginal made hand, right? So he's gonna, he's still gonna have some better jacks that might check.
I just feel like we get so many bluffs when they check.
I don't think that's marginal. I don't think that's marginal after it goes check, check. I don't think it's marginal after it goes check, check, check.
No, he bet into us, right?
Oh.
I wanna, yeah, he checked, he bet flop, checked her.
Yeah, okay.
So I think he still has.
Yeah, that's marginal.
Yeah, that's marginal now.
We're mostly checking and we need some top pairs in the checking range.
Yes, we just bet our better jacks. Jack's better than, over the ten, queen, jack, and jack.
Protection from our weaker pairs and stuff like that. So we need to check, find some check with jacks here.
Okay.
Do we value bet ten? Reopening the action with this ten?
I guess not. If we're supposed to check turn, I guess we don't get to bet now. I mean, that's a two street hand, right? I, I can't, I can't believe it's a three street hand, so.
It is definitely a three street hand.
Yeah, we get on the river. And you got pot, not even one twenty-eight. I was gonna bet.
Definitely.
Get caught by the ten.
I think we're gonna do this one and we're gonna wrap it up.
You don't like that minus sixty?
Nope. No, 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 we're screwing up.
Check.
See? In five hands, we're losing our shit now. He's making eight hundred bucks. I knew we had to leave when we were up.
Yeah.
Now we're losing money that we'll never find again.
We're gonna stack him right here.
Okay, let's do it. Check?
Yeah.
If we're gonna stack him, we have to check.
So a lot of our tens are gonna wanna check raise, but this one's pretty bad.
Yeah, we did it. And now he's, he's just raising back. We just call?
Yeah.
Bet small?
All right, we got a straight draw now, too.
No, check.
Just check, I guess.
Oh, oh. Good lord, why?
We just lost our ass.
Yeah, board texture changes.
No, it's not good. We have a marginal showdown hand.
Yeah, check, there's no reason to.
Well.
Oh, wait, wait, yeah, let's think, let's, before we click, let's let's think, what is he betting for value now? Like, is he, he's not betting king ten, like king ten here, right?
No, he's gonna have some aces.
And he's gonna have ace ten.
And he's gonna have like, maybe like bluffs.
Right, I realized he's gonna have ace ten. Obviously, he's gonna have aces that wrap around the four. He's gonna have the ace wheels. Does he wanna bet them for value? I guess so.
Yeah, he's gonna have.
That many aces either, so. I guess we just gotta, oh my god.
Yeah, weird. He also is gonna have some pot, like the only, the only value hand he has is pocket jacks or a better ten here.
Like some six, sixes make some straight draws. He's gonna bluff. The only thing we're beating is break backdoor flush draws that he continued with on the turn. Probably not a whole lot of hands.
And then he bet, and then he, then he three bet on the flop, which is not his usual way to play the backdoor flush.
Guess it's just a fold.
We block one of his bluffs, but I still think we win against.
Jack nine, queen nine, king nine.
Yeah?
Queen.
Oh, but he beats us as well, right?
Yeah, but he doesn't have a ton of value that's gonna play this way.
Emotion shows us a stand here.
I guess we gotta call.
Yeah, we gotta call. But we lose, we lost our ass again. Because he exactly had a stand.
Yeah.
All right, it was a good session.
Yeah, great work, guys.
Yeah, good job.